Good evening, I am calling the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Our first agenda item is the adoption and approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
A second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Special recognition, Students of the Month for November. I'm gonna, Ashley, I'm gonna go in the order there on my, on my agenda, so I'm gonna start with Kettleworth Junior High School.
Excellent.
Okay, I think we've got everybody from Kettleworth in, so whoever's gonna go first, feel free.
Student of the Month, November 2020. Kettleworth Junior High School is proud to introduce November, our November Student of the Month, Luca Valencia. Luca has been chosen as Student of the Month because he is one of Kettleworth's finest students and most upbeat, fun-loving personalities. Luca has excelled in his classes both during in-person and distance learning. Luca is currently maintaining a 4.0 grade point average after finishing the second semester last year with a 4.0 as well. Luca has also continued to impress his teachers with his positive attitude and presence during distance learning. Mr. Raya, Luca's history teacher, shared, Luca is so much fun to have in class. He is somehow, he somehow knows, just went to unmute and began answering questions without prompting. Because of this, Luca's personality shines through the filter of the Zoom class. Luca's classwork is impeccable and through, and throughout, he always seemed to be in great spirits. Because of Luca, I don't feel so crazy talking to the screen all day. Ms. Fahey enthusiastically shared, Luca's personality shines through the screen. He is fully engaged in class curriculum and is willing to step up and be a leader for his peers. Luca answers questions and asks, and asks even better ones in return. The quality of his work is outstanding. Luca brings a special energy to our distance learning platform that is engaging and fun. When Luca is not in school, he enjoys exercising, reading, and working with his hands. Luca was proud to share through a lot of practice and a lot of falls as he continues to improve his snowboarding skills. After high school, Luca would follow in his father's footsteps and become a contractor. Luca has already helped his dad build a wheelchair ramp for a friend and is also learning how to weld. Luca's mom Christine shared, Luca surprises us left and right with his zest for life. He is self-motivated, eager to please, loves to talk, loves to talk and learn. Congratulations, Luca.
Congratulations. Do we only have one, do we have two from Kettleworth?
Uh, yeah, okay. So this is the Student of the Month for November 2020. Kettleworth Junior High School is proud to announce our November Student of the Month, Nora Allen. Nora has been chosen as Student of the Month because she is one of Kettleworth's most outstanding students academically, and she has one of our brightest personalities. Nora has impressively maintained a 4.0 grade average her entire time at Kettleworth in schedule, in a schedule that includes such challenging courses such as advanced English and Spanish. Nora's teachers were uniform in their praise of her. Ms. Granger, Nora's science teacher, shared, Nora's fantastic, she's always, always engaged, very conscientious, and always participates in class with a smile on her face. Mr. Eklund, Nora's history teacher, enthusiastically shared, Nora's killing it in my class, she's an absolute delight. Nora turns in excellent work and willingly answers questions and always has intelligent responses. Also eager to share his praise of Nora was Mr. Caldwell, Nora's seventh-grade world history teacher. Nora has always turned in incredible, incredible pride here for the biggest parts in our class plays, all while sharing kindness, empathy, and joy with her friends and classmates. It is clear to me that Nora will continue to make the world a better place just simply by being her. Not only is Nora an impressive student, but she's also an outstanding athlete and citizen. Nora continues to rise in the ranks of her soccer program and is proud to have now made the A-Team for the league's best players. Nora has also volunteered with Christmas Cheer, an organization that provides foods and gifts for those in need in our community. After high school, Nora would like to attend Stanford University where she would like to, where she would like to study psychology, pursue a medical degree, and perhaps have practice as a therapist. Nora's mom added, Nora definitely works hard and we are proud of her. Kettleworth Junior High School is very proud of Nora as well. Congratulations, Nora.
Congratulations, thank you. Petaluma Junior High.
We are honored to present Nicholas Nick Dennis as one of our November 2020 Students of the Month. Nick is a local, born in Petaluma on April 25th, 2007. He is an all-around excellent student, athlete, and citizen, and one who always puts forth his best effort in every way. Nick enjoys school, works hard, and earns good grades. He can't wait until regular school is back in session so he can be more engaged in classes and learning with his friends and playing sports. He has been extremely helpful during distance learning by tutoring in his seventh-grade English class. Nick is interested in a career, career in engineering and plans on attending a four-year college when he completes high school. Since he earns nearly straight A's, we don't doubt it. His science teacher says, Nick is totally on top of his work with nothing missing and has a great attitude. He works well with groups and in breakout rooms. His PE teacher adds, Nick is an excellent student who brings a consistent effort and performance to class. Playing team sports is a big part of Nick's life. For a few years, he played on the Wilson Elementary School basketball team and was a valued member of the PJHS basketball and track teams last year until the pandemic shut things down. He is also in scouts, is active in his church, and plays piano. As a sixth grader, Nick was in the class play, a fundraiser for science camp, and thoroughly appreciated the experience. He loves being with his family and enjoys traveling. His parents add, Nick is a joy to have in our home. He is very conscientious and takes care of his homework and classwork on his own. He loves to learn new things. Whether in the classroom environment or helping his dad rewire an old house, he's always interested and loves spending time with his three older siblings. Nick has a happy disposition, is aware of others around him, and is very kind. We look forward to watching him grow up and seeing where life takes him. Nicholas Dennis is a well-rounded, intelligent young man. It is a pleasure to have him at Petaluma Junior High, and we are proud to present him with the November 2020 Student of the Month Award.
Congratulations.
Okay. Petaluma Junior High is very excited to present Yani Bermudas Cortez as one of our November 2020 Students of the Month. Yani was born on July 30th, 2007, right here in Petaluma. She is a quiet, caring, quiet, caring young woman and an excellent student. She has been a wonderful asset at Petaluma Junior High both before and after the pandemic. Yani is one of those hard-working, yet unassuming students. As a native Spanish speaker, she has mastered the English language. Yani learns quickly and works hard. She maintains straight A's in all of her classes and didn't miss a beat when distance learning was implemented. She has a very strong worth ethic, and she is always ready to help others who need it. Her science teacher says, all of Yani's work is finished on time and is done well. She participates in class asking meaningful, meaningful questions. She works well in breakout rooms. This echoed by her PE teacher who comments, Yani is a very sweet and hard-working student who completes her assignments with consistent effort and quality. Yani is planning for continued success at high school and looks forward to attending college. Family is very important to Yani, and she feels very grateful for her parents' support. She enjoys being home, collecting stickers, and playing board games and batmaning with her parents and sister. Before the pandemic, Yani was very active in her elementary school, helping, helping care for the TK and kindergarten students and assisting in the lunchroom in the office at McKinley. She was honored with the principal's award when promoted from sixth grade. Yani continues to be a great support at Petaluma Junior High, Petaluma Junior by assisting some of the teachers during their office hours and tutoring students who are struggling. Her parents add, we are very proud of Yani. She is very studious in school and kind to others. She helps those in need. She is a great example for her sister and a wonderful daughter. We agree. Yani Bermudas Cortez is exemplary. We are proud to honor her with the title of the Student of the Month for November 2020.
Thank you. Casa Grande, you are next.
Sorry, my mom's yelling at me.
Okay.
Casa Grande High School is proud to present Elizabeth Wang as the November Student of the Month. Elizabeth, Elizabeth Wang is an artist, not in the traditional sense, but through expressing her vision into both her scholarly and extracurricular pursuits. She is one of the current editors-in-chief for Casa Grande's award-winning journalism publication, The Casa Revista, and she serves as the design expert for the Petaluma Youth Art Council. Organizing art, um, ex, ex, wow, sorry, I'm, guiding her peers through Photoshop and brightening patient's day at the Petaluma Valley Hospital. Elizabeth extends her eye for art into all aspects of her life. She aspires to combine technology and art together through innovation. When she is older, in her free time, you can find her either researching places to travel, though never going anywhere, baking cakes, or going on hikes. Congratulations, Elizabeth. I'm also proud to present Joseph Gamlin as the November Student of the Month. Joseph is a seventeen-year-old senior with two older sisters. He grew up on the west side of Petaluma but decided to attend Kettleworth for the seventh grade, for seventh grade, ultimately leading him to Casa Grande. At Casa Grande, he has done quite well in enrolling in a number of AP and honors classes while maintaining a spot in the top ten students in his class. After high school, he plans to go to college to get a business degree. While he is unsure exactly what university he wishes to attend, so far he has applied to Santa Clara University, Northeastern University, Fordham University, University of Miami, and Baylor University. In his free time, Joseph often works construction for his neighbor, who happens to be a contractor. But when he's not working, Joseph enjoys watching Netflix, working out, spending time with his families and friends. On the weekend, Joseph usually volunteers at the Renaissance Healing and Learning Center, which is organized, an organization that practices hip, both hip, hypnotherapy for clients with a variety of neurological and orthopedic conditions. Congratulations to Elizabeth and Joseph.
Thank you. Moving on to Petaluma High.
Hi, everyone, today I will be talking about Petaluma High's three. She has an academic GPA of 3.82 and is always keeping her grades up. Cassandra is currently in AP Spanish V, AP Government, and AP English Literature, and hopes to learn new things as well as have new challenges while in school. Her favorite subjects this year are math as well as her AP classes because they keep her engaged throughout. She also balances her time between work and school throughout the week. Working at American Eagle helps her gain interaction skills as well as problem-solving and leadership skills. She enjoys helping her community as well as incoming freshmen as she is also a part of Link Crew. After high school, she plans to attend Sonoma State University where she hopes to further her knowledge and find out what she wants to major in. Congrats, Cassandra. Our second student of the month is Fabian Romo. Fabian is a senior at Petaluma High School. His interests include reading, art, and learning about the natural world. Fabian hopes to study psychology in a four-year university next year. My, his academic interests include language, social sciences, and natural sciences. He is currently enrolled in AP Spanish V as well as in AP English Literature in order to strengthen his knowledge on the English language and Spanish, his native language. He has also enrolled in Petaluma High School's Marine Science Class and is, and is an active docent for the Petaluma Wildlife Museum, where he helps to reinforce their mission to inspire and educate the next generation of conservationists through environmental education and practical conservation. Besides being a docent for the Petaluma Wildlife Museum, he is also a Link Crew leader for PHS, helping freshmen transition into high school and academics. In addition to his academic focus, he is an active member of Petaluma's community. He is a current youth chairman for Petaluma Youth Commission, where he has aided in a variety of different projects to aid Petaluma, Petaluma's youth. Some examples of this being the tobacco retail license that went into place last year and the advocacy for the physical and mental health of Petaluma's youth. The Youth Commission has given Fabian a variety of amazing opportunities in the past three years that he's been a part of, including the ability to earn congressional recognition from Congressman Jared Huffman and to be more active member of his community. Congrats, Fabian. Our last student of the month is Paul Leoni. Paul Leoni is a senior at Petaluma High School. Inside of school, Paul has a dedicated student who loves to learn. He is the vice president of PHS Junior State of America Chapter and moderates weekly political discussions at the club's meeting. Or Cal State of JSA, which is the largest student-run organization in the country. He is also a two-time state finalist of the Lions Student Speaker Contest. Paul loves nature, stargazing, and strolling down paths of California's giant redwoods. He enjoys running, mountain climbing in the Sierra Nevada Mountains, and reading. Other than with his family, Paul spends most of his time with his Pembroke Welsh Corgi Rosie. Although he is still in the college application process, Paul hopes to attend a four-year university and major in either political science or international affairs. Congrats, Paul.
Thank you. And finally, we have Students of the Semester from Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley.
I'm looking for Sophia Brown. And I see three Browns, but none of them say Sophia, and I'm not sure who, she might be with one of them, but I'm not sure who she might be with. Hi, Amy, do you know who I might find Sophia with? Oh, you're muted.
All right, I'm checking to see who we might have her under. Angela or Dan, Daniel?
No.
Matt Brown or Angela?
Ah, I see Matt.
Okay, that's probably her, and Angela Daniel. That's mom.
Angela, so. If either of you have Sophia with you.
There's Angela.
She's with.
Hi, she's with me, sorry, we were trying to figure out the settings here.
All right.
There we go.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, whoever's going to go first, feel free, now that we've got everybody all in here.
So Sophia's up first, I believe, and do we have our presenter here too? I see her there.
I'm excited to present to you Sophia Brown, one of our Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley Students of the Semester. Ever since Sophia began at our school as a kindergartner, her teachers and classmates all recognized her as a diligent, sweet, tenacious person. School has never been an easy road for Sophia, especially as a person with learning differences. She has worked steadily with her differences and has been able, through perseverance and a willingness to be vulnerable and learn from her mistakes, to find ways to shine. But it is not just Sophia's academic progress that makes her feel, that makes her so appreciated by her teachers and classmates. The stance out brightens both Sophia is the way she approaches every day and every class with a smile and positive attitude. Sophia always has something kind and friendly to say. She makes every class and every room she's in a sunnier place where people can feel appreciated. Sophia is observant, imaginative, and a natural storyteller. Ultimately, Sophia lives to find ways to improve the world around her. Sophia might not, may not have a clear sense of what exactly the future may lay for her, but we know with confidence that whatever she does and wherever she goes, everyone that gets to meet her will have their lives enriched and improved because of her presence. She has grown to be a lovable, sensitive, confident person, and we can't wait to see where she goes. We are all so proud of Sophia.
They are. Congratulations, Sophia.
All right. We are pleased to present Tug Diego as one of our Students of the Semester from Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. Tug has attended Mary Collins School since kindergarten and has always stood out as being a helpful, loyal, and hard-working person. Tug is, Tug is an accomplished student who has shown time and time again that he is capable of creating high-quality work whenever he sets his mind to it. His connections to friends, however, is.
Hey, Kayla, we lost your audio, honey. We might need to try and get you back.
Last year, Tug and his family received the difficult news that his mom, Amy, also a teacher at Mary Collins School, was diagnosed with ALS. Tug has done everything in his power to use his caring, thoughtful, generous, loving nature to remain positive and to help his mom and his family through this difficult time. Tug has developed resiliency and strength that has impressed everyone around him. After eighth grade, Tug is looking forward to attending Petaluma High and then hopes to take time to work and earn some money before he begins college. Tug continues to work hard and put all his effort into school, and without a doubt, Tug deserves this. We want to say a big thank you to Tug and want you to know you have deeply impacted us with your kindness, courage, and consistent effort to make others happy.
Congrats. Okay. We are moving on. Our next presentation is a principal's presentation on harassment and bullying.
I don't know which principals are involved with this. Does anyone have names?
I do, yes, it's a.
All secondary.
Yeah. Dr. O, Becky.
Okay, and we'll start promoting people.
Bennett, Justin, and Gio, and Kelly.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and get started. Hello, everybody. I hope that you're doing well in these challenging times. My name is Bennett Holling, the principal of Kettleworth Junior High School. You all can hear me, correct? All right, as the others are joining us, I'm first up. You're gonna hear from the junior highs first, and then the high schools. So essentially, my understanding was, this discussion has to do with the way you presented it, that's kind of like bigger topics. My understanding was we were to talk kind of about like the sexual harassment piece as well as potentially some bullying. So let me just kind of talk about, and we're all gonna kind of talk about what we've done in the past, what we're doing currently, and then kind of what some challenges are. So in the past, when all things were normal, all of our secondary sites have SSR time, right? So SSR times fifteen minutes after lunch. Here at Kettleworth, we, we utilize one to two of those SSR times or meetings per month in order to push the CARES acronym and the CARES lessons. And you can see the, one of the posters behind me, CARES. It's a Kettleworth thing, it stands for creativity, accountability, respect, empathy, and success. And it's kind of our guiding acronym. Anyways, we dedicate these SSR times, these lessons, to covering things like determination, perseverance, organization, vaping, cyber safety, bullying, and stuff like sexual harassment. Through these guided lessons, we then pass out the sexual harassment, the green pamphlet that you, you all have been discussing, okay? So that's in the past. What we're doing currently, it is a struggle, it is. We've sent out the PDF through Parent Square of the green pamphlet that we've shown in the past, and we continue to push Stop It, stop, here at Kettleworth, we piloted Stop It five years ago, and we've been using it ever since. It's definitely a part of our, our institution. Ultimately, the challenges with any of this stuff, like trying to get mass messages out to students, the challenges really lie in, in the shorter days, the shorter length of the periods, teachers struggling to get through their curriculum, the fact that there is no SSR, so there's not like a dedicated time with which we can do this stuff. And the focus really right now, at least for us, is the mental health of students. Ds and Fs are through the roof, so it's, it's really the academic side of things that's, that's of greatest concern for myself currently. All these are extremely important topics, but that's, that's kind of where we're at and what we're focusing on right now. Ms. Kelly, Chris, I think is next.
I am. I'm Kelly O'Neil. Chris, I'm the principal at Petaluma Junior High School. What we've done in the past is the green pamphlet during SSR where our teachers take that time to discuss what's in there, answer questions with students. You know, talk about things, send stuff home with them. We also have Nightmare on Puberty Street, which is the Kaiser Permanente program that comes in and talks about bullying and sexual harassment and other issues. So those are things that we've done in the past. Also, our science program, our science teachers do things kind of similar to what the high school does in HI, but in smaller units, talking about different things like bullying and such. And what we're doing right now, we did send out the green pamphlet to all of our students and all of our parents, encouraging them to sit down and look at that together, since we don't have that SSR time. We also have the Stop It app. We've had our leadership class do videos to explain what the Stop It app is, how to use it, you know, kid-friendly terms so that the kids, you know, hear from their peers about it. We've also started a program called Character Strong. We got a grant where we have little lessons that are being put into our PE classes, and those things have to do with positive body image, positive image about ourselves. Also talks about bullying, kind of along the CARE program that Kettleworth does. The challenges, obviously, is the short amount of time in classes, the, the, just seeing people 2D instead of actually 3D, so that flat screen, not everybody being on a screen. So our teachers are really, they don't want to have these really hard conversations until they can have the kids in a classroom together where they can see them and be able to react to everybody. We also are dealing with the social emotional health of our students, and I think that's our, our biggest concern right now too. So thank you.
Great, I'm next. I'm Becky Lofton. I'm principal at San Antonio High School and Valley Oaks School, and I'm representing the alternative education piece of this. At Valley Oaks, which is, of course, as you know, a unique school. Students come meet with their teacher one-on-one. We periodically have all-school assemblies, and one of our all-school assemblies is for purposes of sharing the sexual harassment pamphlet. All students come in, we have a group conversation presenting the pamphlet, and essentially, that's it. Although the intimacy that our teachers and students share allows for teachers to be aware when, when there's a conversation that needs to happen separate from that larger assembly. Today at Valley Oaks, well, not today actually, but during this distance learning time, we did essentially the same thing. We had an all-school assembly on Zoom, assigned breakout rooms, and teachers took students into those breakout rooms and had conversations using the pamphlet as guideline. At San Antonio, it's very different, and much like my colleagues, the pre-distance learning opportunities for. opportunities for discussing these kind of things with students was very rich. We had an annual health and wellness fair where we invited in a variety of organizations, NAMI, Verity, the Petaluma Health Center, and they spoke to students about a lot of things, including sexual harassment and bullying. And then we would agree as a staff on a period where each teacher would talk to their students about sexual harassment using the pamphlet as guideline. The importance there is that it was the guideline, the conversation that that staff and students could have in person, as Kelly mentioned, is so critical to making sure that you help students understand the the issues that we are concerned about them facing today. Unfortunately, we can't have those in-person conversations. So again, we uploaded the the pamphlet to to Google Classroom, and each teacher took a period and had those conversations with their students, but the two-dimensional conversation doesn't lend itself to to real serious conversations with students. We also have trained on the Stop It app. It will be deployed next week to our students. But I would echo what everybody else has said so far, the mental health component of what our students are dealing with right now and and what we're so concerned about is really driving a lot of what's moving us in the direction to to support our students. Thank you.
Good evening. I believe I'm next. Dan Osteren, Principal Casa Grande High School. We have the Parent-Student Handbook, and this is what we disseminate is on our website. It's the handbook that we have for our school-wide policies. It's on our website. And we speak to it throughout the year with the students, and these have very clear definitions and consequences as well for sexual harassment, bullying, and cyberbullying. We also do the annual dissemination of the famous Green Brochure developed by the district and traditionally distributed to all students in person and this year through Parent Square. There are lengthy and diverse presentations through the human interaction classes. This is a ninth-grade elective for for students to the district graduation requirement. At Casa, we have eighty-five percent of our students take human interaction every year. And broadly speaking, this is in speaking with our human interaction teachers, Rebecca Byrne and Lynn Mokete. So these are broadly speaking, these are teacher-led conversations and lessons around all forms of violence and sexual violence, as well as harassment. And then more specifically, teachers take time to really unpack key terms of sexual harassment, hostile environment, and discuss various scenarios students might find themselves in, an overview of Title IX, and taking time to really unpack healthy versus unhealthy relationships and the traits of those. Review of district language and definitions of those, as well as our our handbook, as discussed, they review those documents and those policies in class as well. They also take time to define bullying in general and discuss scenarios and 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 then go into cyberbullying, which is such an issue these days. Anti-bullying presentations and cyberbullying research assignments are also done in class. And there's a Create No Hate PSA project that they do with students. Last but certainly not least, in the in the HI classes, Verity presents presentations in in person or now during Zoom and provides resources and follow-up opportunities for students who want to participate there. We also do digital citizenship presentations to all of our ninth-grade students. That's led by myself, our teacher librarian, Mr. Nathan Leibkab, and one of our school counselors, Julie Po-Woster. And we do to, we do this presentation to, again, all ninth-grade students through the PE classes, and we focus on online safety, cyberbullying specifically, as well as sleep, screen time, and First Amendment. And then, of course, for reporting, we do have the Stop It Anonymous reporting app now in addition to our traditional, more traditional reporting opportunities that include our hundred and fifty staff on campus.
All right, it looks like it's my turn. Hi, everybody. My name is Justin Moore. I'm the principal of Petaluma High. So we at Petaluma High do share out the green pamphlet. I actually think I see a whole stack of them behind Dr. Osterman's head. So normally, we share this with all our classes on one day. In all our classes, all teachers else grades at the same time. Teachers then review it with the pamphlet. Currently, since we can't do that in class in the way we normally would, we shared out the pamphlet via Parent Square, and we've decided to resend it out monthly just to make sure that people are seeing it, and it doesn't become one of those situations of one and done. Just like Dr. Osterman talked about, our human interaction classes, which are grad requirement, we have approximately eighty percent of our ninth grade in those classes. They cover, in normal times, they cover sexual harassment every fall. And what they'll do is they'll work with the intro to business classes, which are a semester course paired with human interaction, and they'll make sure that students get those presentations in the fall all at once. This year, because of distance learning, that became a bit too difficult, and so half of the students who are taking HI right now have gotten the presentations on sexual harassment, and those who are in business will get that second semester. Dan covered the curriculum quite well, so I don't think I need to repeat that. And then we too, we've had the Stop It app for several years. We've too shared that out this year via Parents Square. Traditionally, we share that information with our students during the first day's activities. Then we reshare it again during our emergency week, and then we do a reminder at the semester. Once again, because this year we couldn't do that in the same way that we usually do, we sent that information out via Parent Square, and we've sent that out repeatedly each month again to make sure that students are seeing it. We also did some focus group work with some students this year, and we found that, you know, trust in reporting and whether or not it is truly anonymous was a concern of students. So our assistant principal, Giovanni Napoli, really worked out the presentation and created some additional slides which show what the site administrators will see when students report. So students can actually see the the behind-the-scenes stuff, not the actual information, but they are able to see just how anonymous it really is. And just like everybody else mentioned, we too are very concerned about the social emotional health of our students. And we're hoping that we'll be able to take some steps in the near future to to really address that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board before we move on?
I have a couple. Yeah, and I appreciate if everyone mentioned mental health. I think that's why we wanted to hear what's going on, because a lot of what students have shared, both in their presentations and through other correspondence, is mental health issues, and I think this is all related to it, especially if they don't feel safe on campus. Did anyone else have anything?
Well, I was unmuting, sorry.
That's okay.
I used to give out the green pamphlet and go over it. I was just wondering how, if it's basically it's at one time at the beginning, and then then it sounds like it's dependent a lot on ninth graders. So I guess my question is, in what, how is it being, or should it be, you know, re reconsidered in all classes? Should it be, I mean, just that one pamphlet going over it once a year isn't particularly effective, nor does it really get in for the kids to really know all of the consequences of it, all the definitions of it? I don't know. Does it outline what the procedures are for reporting? I guess I didn't hear anywhere in here procedures for reporting any of this bullying or sexual harassment. Maybe maybe I've missed it. So if you guys could, somebody could kind of
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you, Betty. So the pamphlet does, and you're right, I do have it right here. That's the Spanish version. Thank you for your patience there. So if you haven't seen it, it defines clearly, first section is what is sexual harassment? And gives examples and defines what is and and what isn't, verbal, visual, and physical. And then next section is what should you do if you think you've been sexually harassed? And it spells that out. It starts, I think a lot of the the framework here is actually pretty good. It's it's it's, I think there's more that could be added potentially, and maybe modernized a little bit using some of the new tools we have, like Stop It, et cetera. But don't ignore the behavior. You don't have to put up with it, even though it's hard to do. You should tell your harasser to stop, and then it goes on to more explicitly describe, if you wish, you can bring someone to help you make your report. And then a bigger paragraph on on more specifically what to do there. And and then finally, a section on, or actually, there's two more. So what will happen to a person who's guilty of sexual harassment? Some things to remember, some other tips, and then sort of a comparison chart on the back on sexual harassment versus flirting is the language that's on the on the patent plate here. So it sounds like it's really ninth-grade heavy, but again, this this is disseminated to all students, grades nine through twelve.
How responsive do you feel like the kids have been to the pamphlet? Because we've heard that they're not that responsive. I think only one school, maybe it was Petaluma High, right? Justin, I think you guys were the last ones to speak, said that you actually speak with the kids about it more than once a school year.
No.
Kids, and how receptive have they been to the information?
So I can say no. In a normal year, it is shared once, gone over with teachers, by their teachers once, but it's usually, that's usually pretty much it. This year, we have shared the pamphlet with students and parents via Parents Square several times, and we're doing it each month. But I mean, you did bring up a good point about the fact that it is presented once, and that's really the only time that it's really addressed. And yeah, HI is where the lion's share of that presentation work is done.
And I'd like to do that, too, after Justin's done.
I have a question.
I want to say that, you know, our kids learn in such different ways. Some are really visual, some are verbal. And I think the the fact that we all do all different kinds of things, it's not just the pamphlet. It's, you know, the programs like CARE, Character Strong, is the Stop It app. It's the kids putting out information to each other. It's the assemblies, it's HI, it's the science class. There's a lot of, they're getting the information multiple times, not just on a piece of paper. So I really feel like maybe that answers Joanna's question a little bit better about the fact that, yeah, we give the pamphlet out once, but it's not like that's the only time we talk about it. It's talked about a lot. And I know that I was at Petaluma High School before I came here. All the counselors across our district are fabulous about working with our kids and getting to learn to know them. I know that our kids, if they have a problem, they'll go to a counselor, they'll go to a trusted adult, they'll slip me a note. They'll come talk to me when I'm out at a break. I get emails still from kids. So I think that we've done a really good job at PCS telling kids that, you know, you develop a relationship with a trusted adult, and you can tell that trusted adult, and then we take care of them.
I guess, go ahead. Well, tonight, we're gonna be talking about the first reading of a revamped board policy on sexual harassment. And I'm just wondering, it sounds like this green thing has been around for a while, and I'm just wondering if it is in line with the board policy on sexual harassment, if some of the information from the policy is in the pamphlet. I mean, it's been a long time since I've seen that pamphlet. I mean, my son's forty, so I'm hoping it's changed since then. But so I'm I'm just kind of curious about the alignment of this new board policy that we're just gonna actually hear tonight and what's in the pamphlet.
But I think even if it is, like, I mean, we're all adults. We're like, oh, yeah, you tell me something one, two, or three times, I'm gonna get it. But kids are different. So it's like, where is the, like, how do we actually know that these kids actually understand what sexual harassment is? They know how to report it, and they know how to recognize it. They know there's not gonna be any retaliation. Like, we can say, oh, yeah, we talked about it throughout the year, but how do we actually know that they're getting it? So I guess, at least to my next question, so when you do have reports of sexual harassment, how have they been handled in the past?
Happy to speak to that. And I also want to reiterate some of the things that have been said regarding the relationships that we develop with our students in person that are impossible to cultivate while we're doing distance learning. It makes it so difficult to gain their trust when we see them for an hour, and maybe they're partly on camera. We can't really determine what's going on with them. But I will tell you, in the past, students have made reports. We have followed up on those reports, and action has been taken against the perpetrator of sexual, I mean, from my own experience, I can tell you that that somebody retired because of the allegations that were made by a student. So we take it seriously. We don't just poo-poo it. We don't just pretend like it didn't happen. Oh, it'll be fine. Just go back to class. When something happens, whatever the the largesse of the complaint, we take it very seriously and pursue it until we're sure that it's been resolved.
I guess one of the things that was striking, one of the reasons we wanted to hear from you, and and what was striking was the Dear Casa Grande and Dear Petaluma High, that, you know, the seventy-one percent of the kids didn't report. And so what what I'm personally trying to figure out, I mean, I know all of you are trying your best to to deal with this, and I'm just trying to figure out what was it about this whole reporting system where you have such a seventy-one percent saying that they, and they don't, I don't think it was really broken down as to whether they were afraid, but they just were not reporting. And so we really don't want to have that continue. So how how can we change this? Obviously, the green pamphlet is, and it depends, it depends on the teacher who's presenting it, how seriously they take it, how they're preparing their kids for it, if they're having discussions around it. So anyway, that's just, that's just my thing.
Yeah, it's a great question, though. I think that's part of what we want to need to drill down on these focus groups is find situations where, you know, and, you know, what is it? Where are those gaps? Where do the students see the gaps?
Right.
Not the adults, but where do, from the student perspective, where do they? Where do they see the communication gaps? Where do they see the, when it wants to, once a someone feels like they're they're being harassed, or maybe it's a their friend? You know, what are the gaps? What's keeping folks from reporting? What's the general sense be out there?
And that's what Justin's doing.
No.
No.
That's the work that we're doing in in committee.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're working on in that in our ad hoc.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to the Bond Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report by Scott Pritchard.
Okay, well, Scott Pritchard unfortunately had a family emergency, and so he was, he's not able to attend tonight. So you all have the Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report is attached to the presentation. I'm happy to provide any or answer any questions you might have. It's a positive report. It reflects the activity really for two thousand eighteen nineteen. We were finalizing the report really literally in February and March when the pandemic hit. And so in working with Scott Pritchard and other members of the committee, we wanted to get this report to you all so that you could see it as we're working on two thousand nineteen twenties report. So are there any questions?
Yeah, I'll start off. Could you remind me, Chris, what is the deadline that we have these bonds available to sell and and how many, how much more is available?
Well, that's a great question. There's really nothing in the law that says you have to sell all of the authorization by a certain period of time. The only thing that is in the law is, you know, when you sell bonds or when you issue bonds, really, from the authorization that we have from the voters, that we have a plan in which we're gonna expand eighty-five percent of those that bond issuance within three years. So that's kind of what's in the law, but we certainly have time. With regard to how much is left, you know, I as we've just closed the books, we're gonna be analyzing that and probably bringing that back to you to let you know kind of where we are and when we anticipate the next bond issuance needs to happen or needs to be done. We may be looking at the spring. Again, when you're when you're doing a bond issuance, you really want to be able to take advantage of low interest rates, because that's what saves our be able to take advantage of low interest rates because that's what saves our taxpayers' dollars. It doesn't save the district or change our authorization. But it certainly um, minimizes the repayment of those bonds from a, from a taxpayer perspective.
We're on the, we're on the scale, uh, scale of tens of millions, right? In terms of uh, outstanding um, bonds to be issued.
Yes. I mean, we, we have, the high school bond was about 68 million, about 26 billion for the elementary. We still have probably easily a third of each of those left um, to issue. We've done two issuances now for each.
Thanks.
And Chris, what about, how are the projects? I mean, what projects are still on the horizon for the next sale?
Uh, well, that's a great question. Most of it's coming down for the elementary. Most of it's coming down to modernization type projects. And modernizations are fairly broad topics. So it includes some of like the roofing projects, the HVAC upgrades we're doing. Um, I would anticipate that for both districts. Um, we're currently doing roofing assessments and HVAC assessments. Especially given the pandemic, we may be shifting more toward as we look at replacing our HVAC systems. Do we also investigate alternatives to upgrading or adding filtration systems? And in, in addition to that, so that you're actually doing um, a different level of filtration, air filtration um, than typical HVAC units do. So that's, that's kind of a long-term goal that we're looking at. But most of that is shifting to modernization. So for example, if you think about Valley Vista, we were able to modernize their multipurpose room. It looks fabulous. If you haven't had a chance to go in, it really does look amazing. Um, and so next on the horizon, we're looking at the McDowell and McNear the uh, multipurpose rooms to start um, working on the design for those. McNear, for example, when we look at their multi, their restrooms are not ADA accessible. So much of the modernization will also contemplate accessibility challenges that we have at our campuses. Um, things like pavement, which we're doing also at Valley Vista. Those are some of the projects that we're currently looking at. For the high school district, it's a little bit bigger. We've, we've done all of the big, if you will, sexier projects such as the track and field and the pool. We do still have the theater project that has not, um, that we have not come up with how to fund. So that, that's still kind of there on the project list. But definitely secondary roofing, we're also looking at, um, as we, as you saw in the last presentation, we're looking at battery systems to support our solar. Do we need to replace solar at the campuses with older solar such as Calworth? That solar system is now in the 15 to 20 year category. Um, and technology has changed a lot since then. So roofing, mechanical systems, solar, battery power, so that we can do greater sustainability during PSPS events. Those are all things that we're contemplating with bond dollars.
Have they, um, have they ever repaved all the paths at um, Casa?
Repaved all of the paths.
You know, all the paths that go in between the classrooms and surround, you know, that are huge puddles in the winter and.
We actually have been working with um, Casa Grande's Design Committee, Site Facilities Committee with our architects doing the plaza project. And that really is re um, completely reinventing the plaza or turning, creating a plaza between the OMU, NMU and the library. So it's a very much of a dead space that is kind of overgrown with plants and weeds and dirt. And did I say weeds and more weed? So.
And broken pavement.
And it really is underutilized. It's a fabulous area. So we have, we've been working with Casa Grande and, and parents, students, staff, site administration to really um, design an amazing plaza. And that is currently in DSA, the Division of State Architect for Approval. And then we actually have a committee on Thursday afternoon to review some of the design changes that were required by DSA. So we're hoping to move forward with that project this spring.
Oh, cool.
Take that, we would take that concept and start applying it to other areas of Casa Grande. Because there, there's a lot of areas, you know, a lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, thanks, Chris. That was great. The next presentation, something I'm very excited about is the Library Diversity Collections Presentation.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Nathan Labcap. I'm the Teacher Librarian here at Casa Grande. I'm also the um, District Elementary Library Coordinator. And I think I have permission to share my screen. Oh.
I can, uh, I can share or you can share anything, up to you.
Uh, if you don't mind, I can do it and then, and all my timing and jokes will hit at the right time and.
There you go. Perfect.
We like jokes.
Well, unfortunately I am not a um, hold on, I do this every day. You guys are going to well witness the um, okay, tradition of teachers narrating as they click on a screen. Okay, I'm not going to get fancy. I'm just gonna, if I, I'm gonna just leave it on this view, if that's okay. So I'm not a, um, here's the first joke. I'm not a uh, designer or anything, so there's a lot of words in this. I promise I won't read them. I didn't put any cat pictures or anything on here to keep people's attention, but the content is good. Um, so uh, yeah, school library is a place for everyone. This is, uh, was something that was designed by one of our colleagues, Lauren Parnes over at Petaluma Junior High School. And you guys asked me, and so thank you for the opportunity uh, to do a presentation and, and talk a lot about what our libraries are doing and how, and how we do it actually. Um, so right off the bat, um, Petaluma City Schools have a, I have what's called a patron-based collection policy, which means that, um, and this is from the American Library Association, the organization that uh, gives accreditation to library programs, certifications and degrees. So um, a lot of the information will be, be shared from, from their resources as well as the California School Library Association and everything cited. So when you, when I'm done, if you guys want to dig deeper into this kind of information, um, you're welcome to. Uh, but yeah, so we have a patron-based collection policy, which means that our, the criteria for selection of materials in our libraries are dependent on the goals and objectives of the educational institution in which our libraries are a part. Um, so in other words, um, you know, our libraries are, are uh, we don't just aim to reflect, promote and celebrate the social and academic diversity of our school communities. They're actually created by the social and academic diversity of our school communities. And so we like to say that we don't judge in the library. Our goal is to create a space where people feel comfortable to explore their interests. Um, you know, without any interference. And if we don't have material that they want, we can get it for them. Uh, it's one of our favorite things to be able to do for students in the sense that um, you know, if we are lacking in anything, we have things to measure K. And incredible community, we have the ability to buy materials for our teachers and our students um, if we don't already have them. So right off the bat, that's kind of, um, you know, what makes our library special. So what are the barriers to creating a policy like that? Or what are the barriers to creating a diverse collection that reflects the communities um, that use our materials? Uh, the first one is censorship, censorship and self-censorship. So um, you know, this is a great uh, blurb from Andrea Jamison on the ALA Intellectual Freedom Blog. But essentially uh, the idea of um, being afraid of, of representing everyone or being, or even self-censorship is kind of a bigger um, uh, hindrance. We are always conscious of selecting materials that are for everyone in our, in our communities and not just from our own interests. Um, another hindrance is simply the, the publishing business of, of books. And so these are two well-known infographics. Um, you can click on, you know, if you want to look at them a little smaller, I know the numbers are small. Uh, one from 2015 and one from 2018. Um, but basically what this shows is one of the largest barriers to providing a diverse collection is the publishing industry itself. Only five years ago, over 83% of children's books published either had a main character who was white or a main character that was non-human, a car, a animal. Um, and thanks to uh, you know, efforts by especially the, uh, we need diverse uh, books movement. Um, this has increased uh, at least in 2018 to a, a higher percentage of representation of the diversity of our, of our country. Um, and in the last two years, that's even uh, increased by fourfold. So just the, just the ability to purchase books with diverse um, main characters is a reality and a hindrance um, that, that we have to work in. And fortunately that's getting better. Uh, and then finally, of course, when we're talking about equity, we can't talk, we, we can't leave out the idea of funding. And so again, here in Petaluma, we are extremely fortunate uh, for Measure K. Um, you know, California, again, I'm not going to read the whole slide, but California is last in the country in high school uh, uh, teacher librarians. Um, the last time this data was taken, there was one teacher librarian for every 32,000 students. Uh, here in Petaluma, we have four, uh, well, now we have four fully credentialed teacher librarians and a library coordinator at each elementary site. So right off the bat, we are doing better than most places in California. Um, when it comes to funding, of course, thanks to Measure K, uh, the secondary schools, due to the wording of Measure K are, are funded and the elementary schools do rely on relationships with their admin as well as fundraising. And by that, I mean just, uh, you know, how, how things are allocated uh, due to the, the smaller kind of pot. Um, but fundraising at the elementary sites as well as community support. Um, so these are the hindrances to creating the diverse collections that reflect the students at our schools and the community at large. Uh, and the hindrances that we face uh, when trying to create equitable services here. And so what are the solutions? Um, well, fortunately, the best solution that we have are our libraries. And so um, you know, just to kind of let you know what my colleagues are up to and how proud we should be of the teacher librarians and library coordinators here in our, in our school district. Um, at Kenilworth Junior High School, Lauren Parnes is on a county commission called the Common Conversations Committee. And she's a, um, in charge of helping write curriculum to create um, you know, discussions about difficult topics using children's books or young adult books. Um, over at Petaluma Junior High, Tara is on the California School Library Association Diversity Committee. So she's on the State Library Committee uh, talking about how to create and promote and celebrate diversity in our libraries as well as uh, she participated in the Common Conversations Committee. Um, over at uh, Mary Collins Cherry Valley is April, who um, works uh, you know, really closely and as do all, all of us, but uh, works really closely with her colleagues and teachers. And they just finished a whole school read using the book, We Are The Water Protectors. Um, where all the students had a art assignment and, and talked about taking a pledge about um, book or about a book that is about um, defending uh, water rights uh, in, I think, North Dakota. Um, if I'm wrong. Uh, at McDowell, uh, we're lucky to, or at Grant Elementary, Alice uh, uh, makes it a point to not only display and promote books with diverse main characters, but um, also in her Read Alouds selects books that are newly published reflecting the population at her school. As well at McDowell, Vanessa does a similar thing. Um, all of our elementary stu- uh, librarians or library coordinators do focus on um, choosing books during their Read Alouds to kind of reflect the population of our schools or our nation. Um, and at McDowell, Vanessa, who's bilingual, selects books by uh, own voice writers um, from the Latino uh, community. And uh, at McKinley, Kathy um, got a huge grant last year that went mainly to uh, Spanish language books. Um, and uh, as well highlights those books in her communications with the families and chooses those topics to read to her Read Alouds. And here at Casa Grande, of course, we were fortunate um, along with um, Kenilworth Junior High to be part of a grant uh, with the librarian at Loma Vista uh, to increase our Spanish language books. Um, because our, our, uh, well, normal times are uh, Spanish language for um, native speakers classes require them to read books. So we have a collection, I'm standing in front of it, it takes up almost one whole side of our library uh, that rivals. And I would, I, I, I think probably has actually more uh, literature and Spanish language than the Petaluma branch of the public library. Um, so how do we do this? You know, it, it's a lot of, it's a lot of responsibility and a lot of um, power to, you know, be a librarian, uh, one that we even exist. And so in our training and our education, our professional development, we are encouraged to think about these things all the time, right? Um, in 1999, the ALA uh, kind of, you know, put a, a flag in the, in, in, in the dirt about what, how important libraries are to um, to our country, right? Um, and so in our training and in our education, all of it always ties into what are called the core values of librarianship. And again, the ALA uses these core values to assign accreditation to schools. So these 12 core values kind of are the, are the small pieces that make the larger whole of what it means to be a librarian and, and how we make our decisions. And of course, this aligns with the core values of Petaluma City Schools. Um, you know, uh, the statement made last year by you, by the board, as well as um, the, the language featured on our promotional materials uh, that reflected the kind of goals that we are, are all come to work every day to try to accomplish. Um, so these solutions are on our mind all the time. Um, and the most important one, uh, as librarians that we're, that we're trained to think about and kind of view our, our, our job through, uh, the one that helps us combat censorship and self-censorship uh, the most is the idea of intellectual freedom, right? Um, so again, this awesome statement that in selecting books, it's not the popular opinion that librarians should seek. It is a myriad of opinions represented by books that reflect the social and intellectual diversity of the world. So in our training, whenever we are thinking about any, like any kind of uh, collection, development, um, these, this is how we're educated to, to think about it. Um, you know, including one of those core values of diversity. Uh, this is another statement by the ALA, and again, you can read into these. But that idea that we're always striving to build a collection where our, our, our students and our teachers see themselves in um, and reflect the, the values of the community and the people in our community is, is always at the forefront of any collection development that we do. And so when we do get to selection criteria, these are kind of the two core uh, um, thoughts from the ALA, again, the National Accreditation uh, Organization for Librarians and our state agency. And I particularly like the CSLAs, which is there on the second line, which is that we support selection policies that provide for a wide range of materials appropriate for the user, placing principle of person, above personal opinion and reason above prejudice. So how do you do this? These are all very uh, you know, high concept ideas and words. So the same way that anyone uh, striving to have a, a wide breadth of opinion or uh, information, we're encouraged to, to sample out our options from multiple sources. And so um, a, a very short list of those multiple sources uh, can again be found on the ALA website. Uh, the, the biggest five that we use, the tools that we use to kind of see what's out there available to us through publication. And as much as we love to read, it's impossible to read every single book ever published. And so a lot of times we spend our time in these professional resources, reading about different books, um, making uh, you know, uh, evaluations on how they fit into our, our collection. Um, all of this, of course, secondary to what, what best serves our patrons and, and the requests that they make. Um, and then of course, here in, so here in Petaluma, we're extremely fortunate to have a, a really close relationship with the Sonoma County Library. Their librarians, uh, their collection librarians send us every month a summary of the books that they purchase uh, with recommendations as to why. And we disseminate that to the elementary libraries and the secondary libraries. Um, we have incredible uh, booksellers at Copperfields who are involved in the community and always keep an eye out for us as individual sites for, um, you know, they have, they're in tune to what our sites and what our, our students ask for. And then of course, uh, teachingbooks.net is a free database offered by the state of California that provides lists for um, books, uh, diverse books and, and multiple interest books for, um, to kind of fill in any of those gaps that these other organizations uh, don't fill. So if you are interested in reading this further, um, you know, I've just provided a few links here at, at the end. Uh, just very interesting guiding uh, documents for our profession, the Library Bill of Rights, the Freedom to Read. Just very interesting guiding documents for our profession, the Library Bill of Rights, the Freedom to Read, and the newly created CSLA anti-racist equity statement that was released last year. That is an exemplary document on addressing anti-racism. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll start off. Thanks, Nathan. I appreciate it. I asked you the same question that actually Maddie asked the principals when we were talking about harassment and, you know, how do we know that these things are actually being used? I want to ask you, are there metrics in judging the diversity of our collections and their use? And if so, what are they?
Yeah, so so we use a platform called Fallout Destiny. And that's basically our library catalog, and all of us can run analysis of of our collection. It it gives us numbers on circulation. It gives us numbers on Dewey Decimal categories for our collection. It doesn't, there there isn't a metric to identify, say, the the diversity of authors or topics. It doesn't get that, it doesn't get that deep, I guess, you know, as far as word searches or or reading the the back, you know, cover kind of thing. But you could, you know, one way to do that would be to look at the, you know, do an analysis of the Dewey Decimal System, for example. And you can kind of get an idea of the size of, you know, the different areas of that collection. Again, it's, it doesn't get so far down into, you know, what, how many main characters of fiction books we have are, you know, of a of a certain representation. But yeah, and and we use that all the time, the the, you know, to be a little nerdy, the the tidal wave analysis is something we all do at the beginning of the year, and it's something that tells us how old our collection is, specific areas that might need to be updated based on best practices and standards for library collections.
Just from personal experience, because I love a library. I found that Kenilworth and Casa and Cherry Valley and Petaluma Junior, when I've walked through, have like really great selections of books and new books with diverse authors. Yeah, and I, and also harking back to the previous presentation, I appreciate you inviting some of us last year to see your presentation about mental health. It sounds like you give that every year. Is that correct?
Yeah, and yeah, so that's that's something that kind of kicks off, it's, you know, it welcomes ninth graders to our school and kind of sets the tone. You know, legally, we're required to do some kind of digital citizenship thing. But as as we all know, when you tell students, you know, do this, don't do that, they tune out. And so we approach it from the from the from the angle of this is, this is the school culture here at our school. And so and so while that, you know, you guys were talking about this earlier, while that does happen at the beginning of, you know, the school year with all ninth graders, there are follow-ups throughout the year in different classes. It's hard to kind of collect, you know, that information, but yeah, that's that's part of, you didn't invite me here to talk about this, but that's the other part of our our job as as teacher librarians is the is the is the information literacy aspect, you know, fake news is is kind of the the common term for it. But just how to read information, there's so much of it out there. The the library saying is that, you know, there, you know, Google will help you find fifty million results and a librarian will help you find the right results.
Yeah. So how is the, you know, distance learning and COVID impacted all of this? I mean, you know, I remember the library always being pretty crazy and active and wonderful and
This is what it looks like.
That's what it looks like. I can't even imagine. So are are kids able to access your, you know, books and can they pick them up? I mean, what's, how do you, how do you work it now or or can't you?
Yeah, so our, our, I mean, you know, there's no reason to to say anything other than our physical circulation is down. You know, a lot of reasons for that are just the the materials distribution policies at each school, the, you know, the idea of, you know, if I'm not personally handing out books physically, I don't feel comfortable making someone else put themselves at risk to do that. There's, you know, we're a huge school and unfortunately, you know, I'll say it out loud, but classroom content and materials probably take priority over pleasure reading. But the the nice thing is, again, going back to Measure K and living in this community, the nice thing is, is that, you know, last year, when all of this happened, we did make a move to kind of create more online content. So just as an example, the 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 Sonoma County Library has about thirty six million dollars budget a year. And so we decided that it's it's going to be impossible for us to match their their ebook content. It's just not something to even try to compete with. And so what we focused on more is, you know, again, providing books for our patrons, that patron-based policy. So we put out the the word for, you know, this is what we're going to, and and these are the, you know, this is your opportunity to ask us for books, and we got huge requests for that. And then the other part of that is we, at the end of last year, we had a huge partnership with Sonoma County called the One Card, the Student One Card. You guys might have might have crossed your desk. But basically, what that is, is it's a program from provided by the Sonoma County Library that allows students to access the Sonoma County Library's ebooks and electronic resources with their with 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 safe student information, right? It doesn't, I mean, it it doesn't connect to any kind of FERPA information, right? And so that is used extensively. I I'm finding and talking with colleagues, that's one of the main things that we're doing now is we're kind of providing students with access information rather than materials. But we still, you know, we still provide physical books, each site's different. And and, you know, so so, yeah, we're still as busy as ever as far as like just connecting people with resources, going into classrooms weekly, if not daily. But yeah, it's, it's a little, it's quiet in the library, and this is not a quiet library.
This is not okay, no. It will be again.
Yeah.
Do you ever work with teachers in developing their own classroom libraries? So their classroom libraries also reflect the diversity of the student population?
Um, well, fortunately, you know, we don't we don't have to in in a way, right? So a lot of, so a lot of times, classroom libraries are a are created because of a lack of a central library. And so while we while we certainly would help teachers do that, you know, once you kind of go over what it takes to actually like keep track of the materials and circulate the materials, what we do at every site is we is we use the library as a classroom. And so, and so, you know, we are not, we're not, we're not separate from the school, like Maddie was saying. You know, during normal times, the Casa Library probably got four, four hundred to six hundred single individual visits a day from seven thirty to four. You know, students coming in from the cold, waiting, waiting from the bus to students, you know, we stay open until four, for students to be able to be picked up. And so the way that we work with teachers, rather than like a classroom library, is we bring the students in here and we teach them about how to select books, we let them roam, and we talk about, you know, or I talk about the importance of books. So it's, so but in the sense of working with teachers, what we what we do is, you know, especially at the at the secondary school, again, you know, the secondary schools have credentialed library coordinators that work full-time, and two of the sites are fully staffed, which means we we have assistant librarians. So what that allows us to do is go into classes or bring classes in here to actually do some actual teaching, right? I have a special class credential, all all credentialed librarians have a special class credential that we can teach classes on research, information literacy, and digital citizenship. And so that's, that's how we work with teachers in Petaluma City Schools, is we are supplementary. You know, we talk about current and best practices for using databases for research, how to go on Google and actually use Google effectively to, you know, instead of letting Google do the thinking for students, students going in and using Google as a tool and to think for themselves and to not be, you know, to not have their papers be written by an algorithm, but have a papers being written by the question that they themselves produce. So, um, so, yeah, so it's kind of not, you know, I'm not running for office. That's kind of not answering your question. But we we don't, you know, if a teacher wants a classroom set, we have done that before, you know, Ms. Tennis's classes, the ELD classes, we find those specific books for them, and we encourage them to come to us because we see that, we see the use of a library as as a life skill.
Great, thank you. I just came from a school that didn't have a wonderful library like Petaluma City Schools. So I had to develop a classroom library. That's where that question came from.
Oh, yeah, no, my, yeah, we could talk about, you know, lots, lots of lives are started in classroom libraries. But we are so fortunate here to have the these spaces.
But I think that's an important question as well. You brought up Ellen because, I mean, and it's great that they have the supplementary, like I spent so much time in the library growing up. But it's like Nathan, one of those slides you showed about, you know, like how few like main characters of color or diverse in any kind of way that there were, yeah, thank you for bringing that back up. And it just makes you wonder, like, how, how does, how closely does that represent, like, a teacher's classroom library, like, how white are the books? How straight, male are the books, as well as the required reading? And, yeah, I mean, it's, they can go in there and get a diverse book, but also, like, I'm sure they also want to be taught and be able to explore and, you know, go more in depth about a book that they're going to be graded on as well. I don't know if that's what you're referring to as well, Ellen, but
Well, kind of, just what kind of books teachers had in their classrooms. And again, what kind of, you know, who are the authors they're teaching?
Yeah, well, so, you know, I'm, I'm not in, I'm not in the classrooms to make those curriculum decisions, but we do. But again, I mean, you know, I was, I was looking up, so the author, Ta-Nehisi Coates, says that the the classroom is where you are kind of reading other people's, what other people want you to read. And the library is where you can explore the life that you want to live. And so, you know, at the end of every year, I am definitely going into classes because, again, we 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 have, I think we have about seventeen hundred students here a year and or seventeen hundred students, and we probably usually hit about four, four and a half thousand checkouts. And and a large part of that is because our our teachers are aware that, you know, they're they're teaching for, you know, whether it's the CASP test or whatever, that and at all these schools, like, teachers have, you know, at, or at Kenilworth, they have SSR, and at PHS, they have SSR. But teachers encourage and give up class time to bring them in here to to kind of show students that they have that option, right? Again, reading is a life choice, I think, especially right now, you know, not to brag, but I think the greatest thing I ever did as a parent is teach my daughter to read because, or like encourage her to love reading because right now during all of this, you know, she she just picks up a book when she's bored, and that's, and that's a life skill. That's not something you're born with. That's something that's encouraged, and that's, you know, if that's not encouraged at students' homes, then it definitely is encouraged once they get to our schools.
Thank you.
Well, I'd say I think you guys are great. I love Lauren Parns. She like really saved my daughter through junior high. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be more than happy to let any, any of them talk in my place. So if you, so if you ever want to hear someone else's voice, they, we are, we are just extremely fortunate to have, to have these libraries and and these librarians.
This is really a great presentation. I really appreciate you coming and doing this.
Thanks for asking.
Yes, thank you very much. It was great. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Okay, we are now at comments from the public. So let me read my little blurb real quick, and then the chat will be open for a couple minutes. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully, take notes, and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person lit time limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. The chat will be open for two minutes. Please include your full name and your topic.
So chat is though is going to be open. Make sure you include your name and the topic you will be discussing. We'll close down the chat shortly. Okay, Ashley, you want to close down public comment? You could probably group these into all ones related to reopening as one group. Do you want to take the non, you can take those first or take the 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 other ones that are the non-reopening ones first?
I'll take the reopening ones first. Let's see, yeah, so that would be Erin Minow, Doug Cox, Chris, Christie Hultquist, okay. So we'll start with the the school reopening, so that's a twenty-minute window.
So we've got, we've got, let's see, hard to say how many.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I see seven.
So we, so we'll set it out so that we stay within our window at a three-minute time limit. So Ashley, you'll want to set that for three minutes.
And do you want me to share my screen with timer on it again?
Yeah, can you share it not so big, though?
It's, it's either all, share the screen or not share this.
Or not at all.
Go ahead and share, yeah, go ahead and share it, that's fine.
Okay, so we are going to start with Erin Minow. Did I say that right? Cohorts opening.
Yes, hello. Hi, Minow, you got it right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a speech language pathologist for South County Consortium, and I work closely with the And I work closely with the teachers and families that we work with. Um, and I just wanted to say that as discussions and movement to open special education cohorts moves forward, that I ask that the board ask administration to start a committee that consists of moderate to severe teaching staff to create shared decision-making and a collaborative decision on a safe return to school. The teaching staff know the best ways back and we need to be part of the process. Um, we ask that a plan for each SDC class be agreed on and presented before a return date is determined to ensure enough time to make it a reality. We want to remind the board that the majority of these are not students who will tolerate masks and sit in the desk. But we need your support to promote a plan for how to safely accommodate for these students by enlisting those who work closest with them, their teachers. These decisions about return cannot and should not be made without them. Please ensure that they are involved in this process because a hasty decision to open will not result in a successful experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Doug, secondary schedule, Doug Cox, secondary schedule, second semester.
Hi, uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. So, uh, I know most of you, but for those of you who are listening, uh, so my name is Doug Cox. I'm a teacher at Pelham High School. I teach computer science and math, and I'm also the chief negotiator for PFT. Um, I was wanting to talk about the secondary schedule because I was part of the team of teachers last summer in June and July that worked on the schedule. And I thought we had come up with a really, really good plan for how we were going to deal with distance learning and hybrid in terms of scheduling. We had over fifty hours of meetings, uh, lots and lots of different people representing different sites. There was lots of alternatives that were considered, and we decided on one that we thought was going to be the best. Not that it was going to be perfect, but it was going to be the best for safety and student learning. And what we had come up with was a six-day rotation with three cohort groups. So schools would be cut in thirds. And on any given day of, uh, your classes, uh, only a third of the students will be present. So you'd have about nine to eleven students in a class. And you do an A day and a B day with one group of kids. And then the next two days, there'd be a second group of kids coming in doing the same thing. And then, then the final two days, the third group would come in. And, and the first twenty minutes of every class, what would happen is, is that all kids would be involved either in person or, you know, via Zoom like we do now. And then after the first twenty minutes, the kids who are at home, we continue on, uh, on the run. One of the reasons why we did this was school safety and that with only a third of the kids at school at a time, that was really important for us. It would help us with social distancing and other things like that. But also what it does is if kids are on campus for two days and then they leave us for at least four, it would also include a weekend. So they'd actually be gone for six days. So if they got sick at school, they would be basically hopefully developing the symptoms at home, not at school and infecting other people. So that was super important to us. So if safety is an issue, the one we have currently is, is, does meet that. So we had a meeting today because we're, we've been asked to rethink all this stuff here. And I personally was super concerned because we used the consensus model and shared decision-making last summer, and that was agreed upon. And now basically that, that model we had talked about and decided upon was basically thrown out. We were charged with doing a three by three or something else like that. Uh, and I believe part of the reason why is, is that Rancher Katati supposedly has a better, you know, rate of success now with their kids than we do. There's many reasons for that beyond the schedule. It's not just that they're doing a three by three, but it could be that their lowest grade is fifty percent, not zero percent. So that could be impacting things. Bottom line, I did a survey of my students yesterday in my computer science classes. And, uh, there was mixed results. There was some kids who definitely said, yeah, let's do it. Uh, but that was eleven percent of my kids. And thirty-seven percent, in other words, three times as many said, no way, don't want to do it. They said things like this, we're going to get blown away with having to do eighteen weeks worth of, or eighteen weeks of material into nine weeks or less. How does it impact APs? What about imbalance of A to, A to B days? There's all these different issues here. So what I'm saying in my final two seconds is, I hope we consider keeping our current schedule that we decided upon the, uh, summer. There's really good reasons for doing so. And I guess that's it because I'm out of time.
Thank you, Doug. Um, Christie Holtquist on reopening schools.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Christie Holtquist, and I teach transitional kindergarten at Valley Vista. I am speaking tonight on behalf of myself, Kelly Wood, TK teacher at McDowell, Rena Salazar, TK teacher at Pen Grove, and Lara O'Brien, TK teacher at McNear. Together, we have a hundred and six years of preschool through elementary school experience in both Sonoma and Marin counties, private and public schools. We all have children that currently attend or have graduated from Pelham School District. Our TK team works hard to provide a loving, hands-on learning experience. Our students and families are on our minds and in our hearts at all times. We are heartbroken that we cannot be with our students in person. Last spring, distance learning was a challenge. We questioned ourselves every day. We still question ourselves. But right now we have a routine that works online, a routine that works for our students and families. Routine and consistency are key for young children. We have provided hands-on learning while limiting school screen time because that is what we believe is right for our students. We zoom live rather than make videos so that the children can connect to us and their peers. We are working overtime to make distance learning work for Pelham's youngest learners. Distance learning is not what any of us want, but it is what we need to keep everyone safe, ourselves, the children, and their families. If we had to return to in-person learning, we believe it could be a very difficult transition for our students, both mentally and physically. In our classrooms, the needs of our students include helping with nose blowing, zipping pants, tying shoes, a hug and a Band-Aid when they're sad. In TK, we learn how to share and be kind. We explore and move about, but never six feet apart. The district, I'm sorry, the district website even describes our program as, quote, "designed to support young five-year-olds" and quote, "helps children to develop socially and academically." Asking a child not to share, not to touch, not to get too close is the exact opposite of what we need and what we teach in TK. We believe, although not ideal, it is in the best interest of our students to continue with distance learning format. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Elena McDonald.
Hi, my name is Alana McDonald, and I am speaking as a special education teacher. Today was announced that there is a record rise in cases of COVID-19 across California, and counties are falling back into more restrictive tiers. Hospitals across the country are reaching one hundred percent capacity, and there are more lockdowns happening across the world. We are entering the dead of winter, and flu season is approaching. As we get closer to the formation of special education cohorts, it may not be in our best interest to open at this time. Does it not concern anyone? Then the purple tier, the county health department has to approve waivers for general education, elementary, or even extracurricular activities. Yet no approved plan is needed for special education. These cohorts would require teachers to return to their classroom due to special training required to run such programs. With a myriad of disabilities that we work with, safety is our number one concern. And there's still steps, many steps yet to be taken to ensure that safety. In our SOC program, we have classes at non-pelham city schools campuses, some of which are not aligned with Pelham City Schools protocols for maintenance and cleaning during this time. We ask that special education classes at non-pelham city schools under the PCS umbrella be aligned before cohorts are formed. Staff need to feel safe to return to the classroom. Families need to feel safe for their children to return to be safe at school. And teachers need to feel safe, feel that they can keep students safe, and students need to feel safe and able, in, in order to learn. We do know that wearing a mask, washing hands, and keeping our distance helps prevent spread coronavirus, all of which are more challenging to implement in a special education class. In special education, we use the term dump and hope. This model is where students are put into class without careful planning and supports to ensure their success. All there is is hope for the best. Let's not just jump our special education classes in without a carefully thought out plan. Don't just think it'll be easier because accounting health approval is not needed. Let's not just hope that those, that these smoke cohorts will become sick and beca- become death as a result. In this, this just, in this district, there has been a lot of talk about discrimination and prejudices. There also exists just a discriminate, discrimination towards students with special needs and disabilities. Let's strive for inclusion. Make sure that students with special needs, families of children with special needs, and staff who care, who care deeply for them are included in making successful plans and treated like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Brown regarding special ed as well as reentry plans and protections for teachers.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. Um, my name's Patty Brown and I'm, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, okay, just verifying. Um, I'm, I'm a teacher with the South County Consortium. It seems to be quite a popular, um, group this evening. I appreciate all of my, um, compadres for sharing, and I do appreciate Doug for all the work that he's been doing this summer with, um, all of the meetings in our negotiation committee, of course. I'd like to make three points this evening that, um, have concerned me. I have worked at Pelham High School every day of the school year, this school year. I go to school every day. I take my survey and I, and I do the, um, the, the, um, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time with my technology here on this end. I take the surveys and I do the, um, have my temperature taken. And one of the things that, um, I've, I've observed cleanliness. My class is clean so much that my papers curl up, which many teachers can share. I just have three, three areas I'd like to discuss this evening. What it is that I see happening is there's a lot of fear and, and, and it's rightly so. I take care of my, my parents who are elderly and I take care of them. I'm one of the primary people to help them. And so I, I have concern, but I still want to go back into the classroom. I feel that it's a really important thing that we, um, get back to school, that we get back to the school for our kids. So there's three areas that I'd like to discuss. I'm trying, I'm so sorry, but I'm having a hard time with my technology here on my end to get my, um, pay, my, my note up. One of the, one of the key entries is how are we going to maintain the cleanliness that we would really need to have our students back in place? Um, and, and that's a concern for everyone. How are our classrooms being cleaned now? Number two, um, we would really be needing to be given PPEs completely, given PPEs to cover our entire bodies, just as frontline workers would. And that would be something that probably would be required at this time for our students. And number three, because we do have students that are struggling and having difficulties with severe, moderate and severe disabilities, I do feel that they are, um, missing out and not having in-person instruction. But I do feel that we need a plan, and there are only eight weeks until school is back in session for January fifth. So I'd really like to see a plan in writing, and not the day before winter break, but I'd like to see a plan within the next two to three weeks given to all teachers at all levels for what the reentry will look like. If it's going to be a hybrid or full reentry, I would like to see that plan in writing within the next three to four weeks because that's eight weeks and we're back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sandra Larson.
I, I too think I am unmuted. I have a couple of, um, points to say about this. First, you've heard teachers talking, some special ed teachers talking because it's when, when teachers now will say, we hear, oh, I want you back, and it doesn't feel safe, then teachers don't feel valued. So, um, it is a scary time. It is unsafe. And we need to make sure we're safe when we go back for our students and for us. And when we hear plans like, okay, for three, I'll start, and if it works out, more will go. Well, what I hear is a third grade teacher is, oh my gosh, I'm a canary in the coal mine. I'm going to go back and if I don't get sick, then someone else will go. So I just need you to know that words have meaning and that we're hearing those words and that it's scaring a lot of our members. Also, um, when, we've done a really good job at, as working as a district to come up with plans. We need to be allowed to continue that and come to consensus. We've proven that that's what works. So we need to be able to continue that without hearing, um, orders from the board or from anyone else. We need to continue to work to come to consensus so that we can all be safe and go back safely. And finally, I just want to hit on a little bit of what Patty said. This has been such an incredibly hard time. And Christmas break is coming, and we really need to assure that every teacher, every admin, everyone who gets Christmas break for the whole time can walk away and not think about working during those two weeks. And if something comes up last minute and we're told we need to come back, whatever, that's going to interfere with people getting the rest they desperately need. We always talk about how we love teachers and appreciate teachers, and we need to show that we appreciate all school, everyone who's working at the school, classified, certified, and management by making sure everyone gets a much-needed break. It's really important for our mental health. And I will end that minute early, so thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Um, and finally, our last speaker is Nicole Ware. Talking about timeline for special ed cohorts.
Yes, hello. My name is Nicole Ware, and I am the mom of a child in a special ed classroom in the South County Consortium. I agree that it's absolutely crucial for our kids to get back to school. It was fascinating sitting in on the board study session last week and hearing about the nonprofit organization, I believe it was called Youth Truth, that did that survey, and it came back that Sonoma County, this outlier county, and there's huge concerns about kids in our county. Special ed kids included. I mean, you know, all they've been through, and these kids are really struggling. And they are hugely missing not having in-person teaching. I mean, my child is supposed to be learning to read and write, and not having that in person is OT, PT, speech, um, et cetera, is going to impact him for the rest of his life. And, um, I just really would like to know a timeline realistically when there will be in-person cohorts, small focused ones for these kids who need these services the most. There is a reason why there was this group was in that most at risk, and let's look at this. Let's support these kids sooner than later. I'd also like to know social emotional groups. What is in place for these kids? What is available? It's so important for them right now as well. And also, if there is a reopening committee formed for these bed cohorts or classrooms, I ask that there's also parent seats on these committees so that parents can have a say, can be aware of what's going on, what's needed, where, where these are at. So we're not being left kind of in the dark with, you know, what's going on and things these cohorts need to, to reopen safely. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, so, um, I'm now going to Sarah Andropoulos, who wants to talk about post-election student safety. And then Sarah, we'll come back to you when we get to the sexual harassment piece. Okay?
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm Sal Andropoulos. They have pronouns in Pelham, it's tied in North Bay LGBTQI families. And so the, the non-agenda item I wanted to address was just asking PCS what the district's plans are or what. or what discussions are happening regarding keeping students safe in the event that there is post-election sort of backlash in our community is, yeah, you know, as we've unfortunately seen, I think some of the sort of extreme rhetoric and hate speech and intimidation that have been prevalent at the national level over the past few years have been reflected to some degree here in Petaluma and in our school communities. And I think during both the near term and over the long term, I think the school district and also the city and in their areas need to proactively address the likelihood that regardless of whether we're in distance learning platform or something else, some of this could translate to safety issues in our in our community, particularly for BIPOC and LGBTQ plus residents and students. So in light of the outcome of the presidential election, I think it's important to be both vigilant and communicative with the PCS community about the district's plans and priorities related to student safety in the context of these changes as well as the continuing efforts to develop a culture of equity and inclusion. And then on the amended board policy, the agenda item 12.2.1, the policy regarding sexual harassment. The first reading that's happening later on this evening, I just wanted to say that there are, I feel like there are a lot of positive additions here in the policy, including language at the beginning of that reflects a strong stance on the part of the board against sexual harassment. And also replacement of terms such as his and her with inclusive gender neutral language such as there, which is really, really great to see. And also the revision reflecting that whether a complainant complies with formal filing procedures, that the allegations will be investigated and acted upon. So that seems really, really positive. And I just had a few questions after reading through it and understand that a policy of this nature, like, it needs to be worded broadly. And some of this may be addressed in administrative regulations. But considering some of the input from recent board meetings, particularly from students, was wondering about questions like whether it would be possible to incorporate stronger language around a requirement for anonymous reporting to be made available for students. And also I see the policy addresses disciplinary action for PCS employees who've engaged in misconduct. But should the policy also address what accountability mechanisms may be in place for PCS employees who fail to follow protocols related to harassment reporting or responses? Similarly, should PCS employee training be spelled out more clearly, such as the requirements in terms of maybe stating that needs to be ongoing? And also for, you know, student education and training regarding this topic. Should it be more specific in terms of maybe potentialing requirements like for interactive training, for example, and maybe more specific information about minimum standards for behavior? And then similarly, the concept of, you know, should the concept of equal representation for students or student input in general be included in some way? And also, should there be a mention of the idea of like frequent reminders of the policies in terms of it being disseminated be included? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Brent Newell, public comment at the October 13th board meeting.
Thank you. Could I raise a point of order before you start the clock, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Am I to understand that we are to make public comment on action items now at this point?
Um. Well. They've already been made, so I'm not going to change right in the middle of it. If you wanna if you want to make a comment about an action item, I'm going to give you the choice of doing it now or doing it when we bring that item up.
Okay, because that that would be preferential. The comment I wanted to make now was that at the October 13th meeting, when you got to agenda item 11.1.1, there was not a public comment opportunity. And that's when the board adopted the motion about the learning platform, the the motion and resolution about the learning platform. So I just want to make sure that I make comment at the appropriate time and that in the future, the public has the opportunity to make comment on action items. I've attended hundreds of state and and local board meetings and I've never seen a agenda run where public comment occurred at the beginning and there wasn't public comment when action items came up later. So I just want to be clear about how you're running your meeting so that I can, you know, give a give comment at the appropriate time.
So there was a statement that was made when we opened up the the chat box for for individuals to that had an interest in either making a public comment, a general public comment or a comment on an agendized item. They did so at that particular time when that chat box was open. In other board meetings, most most board meetings, we have a combination of individuals that submit both items for particular comment later on in the agenda or general public comments that we take at that time. So we did not have any specific items to that particular agendized item.
Okay, so so I'd like to comment on agenda item 11.1.1 tonight. Will there be public comment when you get to that action item or am I giving comment now?
It's your choice on that. If you would like to, if you'd like to wait as many people do, or you can choose to to make that comment now.
I I prefer to wait because the staff will give a presentation and I hope that that you open public comment because on the October 13th meeting, public comment was not opened during that action item. And the board adopted the resolution without accepting public comment at that point.
We only open public comment if you have listed that you want to comment on that particular item. We do not open a public comment in our Zoom platform. We open it at one time. For you.
Okay, I want to make public. I would like to make public comment later during the action item on agenda item 11.1.1.
Sure.
And I've made a note on my my agenda to get back to you. All right?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And finally, we have Sarah. I'm gonna blow it again. Site check.
Can you hear me? No, you did not blow anything. You did just fine.
Before you start, I have a quick question. Do you want to wait on your sexual harassment comment until we get there or do you want to make it now?
Uh, either way, I have the library comment as well and my comments on sexual harassment are in regards to what was spoken about. But I can also talk about it then later, whichever works better for this, for your schedule is fine with me.
Um, why don't you do it when we get there so that it's it's fresh? And I'll make a note to come back to you. Okay?
Wonderful. Okay, so in regards to the library presentation, Nathan, thank you so much for all that you've done with the libraries. I want to uplift as well different speakers that have come to the different schools. In particular, the schools that my kids go to, which is Mary Collins School, Cherry Valley. April Derby does a really impressive job of bringing diverse speakers in with different books into the classrooms as well as to the different grades. In regards to diversity and equity within the collections, Tide has been working really hard with the schools and we also met with Nathan in order to get and advocate for professional development days for the librarians. And we were happy that that went through. And I would love to see more information on which specific trainings are being done and given workshops given to the teachers or given to the librarians and library managers in regards to diversity and equity and inclusivity in their library collection. And then also to make a point in regards to, oh, well, going back to that, I think that perhaps an audit of the books that we have in the schools would be really good thing to do to go through with, you know, a group of people or what have you to see where our schools really lie in in terms of those diverse topics. I think that a big challenge is is that particularly in K six, where the libraries are depending largely on donations and fundraising, where is the funds going to be to be able to increase the circulation of diverse topics and and things that are coming more and more these days? I know we do a lot of donating to our library and I'm not sure if the intertransfer between schools is able to be done smoothly and how we're going to get money for those. Also, I think the distribution of books, like actual physical books, adds to the mental health and wellness of our students. And I'd love to hear more about what's happening in regards to library distribution of books to our students. So thank you, libraries. We love you. That's all.
Thank you, Sarah. And I will come back to you when we get to the sexual harassment piece.
Okay.
Okay, I promise. I won't forget. All right. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members. The Arts Alliance Meeting, a webinar in equity and education, Budget Advisory Committee, San Antonio Awards, Curricular and Extracurricular Meeting, School Climate Ad Hoc Committee, Petaluma Black for Community Development and Alternative LPAC Range Funding. Okay, we are now at Approval of Consent Agenda by Consolidated Motion. Let's move that in and then we can talk about it if anybody has any comments.
I move to adopt the consolidated consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Maddie. Okay, comments, questions on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Um, now we are on action items. Approval of Resolution 2021 dash 10 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, State of California for Small Learning Cohorts, Extracurricular and Co-Curricular Programming and Secondary Schedule Second Semester. Let's move it in and then I'll go to Brent and then we can talk about it. So do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve that resolution 2021 dash 10.
I second.
Thank you, Joanna. Okay, Brett, you're back on. Can we read it?
Can can I'm sorry, excuse me. Can we read it?
You want to read into the record? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
Do you want the discussion?
Um, why don't we into the record first and then we'll have the discussion?
Sorry, Brett.
You're you're gonna have to, one of you read it in. We're we're our internet's down here. Most of us are on cell phones.
I can do that.
Yep.
Sheldon?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah. All right, Resolution 2021 dash 10, Resolution of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, State of California for Small Learning Cohorts, Extracurricular and Co-Curricular Programming and Secondary Schedule Schedule Second Semester. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has severely impacted socially emotional development of students by limiting social interaction, including activities that are traditionally offered by schools. And whereas extracurricular and co-curricular activities are critical to students' social, emotional and academic development. And whereas parents, PCS staff and community groups are all eager to support students' holistic development. And whereas distance learning has disproportionately impacted the academic achievement of identifiable groups of students, including English language learners and special education students. And whereas Sonoma County allows special needs cohorts to have in-person classes even while the county is in the purple widespread tier risk for COVID-19. And whereas any successful hybrid delivery of instruction during the pandemic is contingent upon physical and behavioral adjustments at schools, including maintaining spacing between all individuals, wearing masks, cohorting students, frequent cleaning of shared spaces and materials and responsive virus testing and contact tracing. And whereas secondary schools' academic schedules present the added challenge to hybrid instruction because of the higher degree of mixing among cohorts. Now therefore be it resolved that Petaluma City Schools will work with students, parents, community groups and county public officials to develop and implement regular, safe and equitable extracurricular and co-curricular programming for students. And be it further resolved that Petaluma City Schools will develop and implement small learning cohorts led by credential teachers for English language learners and special education students, grades K through 12, who are most impacted by distance learning. And be it further resolved that Petaluma City Schools will develop viable schedules for elementary and secondary schools in anticipation of returning to some form of hybrid instruction in spring semester.
Thank you, Sheldon. Okay, Brent, you are one.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? All right. So my comment goes especially to the provision regarding special ed cohorts. But you can take it with equal regard to other staff during your hybrid learning and this extracurricular provision and this resolution itself. What I want to draw your attention to is a document by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC called Strategies for Protecting K through 12 School Staff from COVID-19. It's available on CDC website and it was most recently updated on October 21st, 2020. What that document describes is is how the district can best protect its staff during the pandemic. And the conditions around the pandemic are increasing in severity. So this is, this is critical. And in that document, it describes how teachers and staff who work with students with disabilities are considered to be in the same class as direct service providers and healthcare professionals. That is because students with disabilities are frequently unable to maintain social distance, frequently unable to wear a mask, and that exposes teachers to the risk of coronavirus transmission. As you consider this cohort model, you must ensure that your staff are receiving appropriate workplace protections under the Occupational Safety and Health Act, OSHA, or the OSH Act, and receive appropriate PPE. Imagine a healthcare professional decked out in PPE. It's important because you don't want these cohorts to become spreading clusters for COVID. You know, the record in your October 13th meeting described how two cohorts of general ed students had to be shut down because of COVID spread. There are also important regulatory changes of which you should be aware. The first is that the Cal OSHA Board, in its November meeting, is going to be considering adoption of an emergency temporary standard to protect essential workers, including teachers. This is important to protect people in the workplace from the spread of coronavirus. Moreover, because of the election of Joe Biden to the presidency, federal OSHA will very likely adopt an emergency temporary standard within the first several days of the Biden administration. This will apply to essential workers. Embarking on a on a plan to put teachers back in the workplace where they could be exposed to coronavirus and risk their health is is something you should take very seriously. I would be happy to work with members of the board and the union. I'm an attorney. I'm a senior attorney of public justice and our team works on COVID-19 and worker exposure. I'm speaking to you when in good faith and in an effort to protect our students and teachers and all staff during this pandemic. I understand that there's a lot of pressure to bring students back to school. Special ed students are in dire need of appropriate care and education and must receive the their education in the least restrictive environment. So I'm sure that there's a way that the school district can ensure teacher safety and protect students all at the same time. But there is a moving target here with the Cal OSHA Board meeting this month with Joe Biden's administration taking a very different tact with protecting workers from COVID. administration taking a very different tact with protecting workers from COVID. And I heard the, the union representatives here speak very clearly about wanting to work with you and protecting teachers. So, I urge you to modify this resolution and to take all appropriate steps to protect teachers and staff from COVID as we enter the winter time here and an uptick and increase in COVID transmission. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, I think it would probably be appropriate at this moment to talk about what kind of precautions the district plans on taking, where we're at with our PPE and all the other all the other issues regard, related to safety. So I know Chris, Chris are you there?
I'm here.
Can you kind of talk to that a bit?
So, we have a tremendous amount of PPE that we've been issuing out for the small academic support cohorts that are currently up and running. We have set up testing classrooms throughout the district where we're adding plexiglass. We're outfitting them with gloves and masks, disposable masks, cloth masks. We have electrostatic sprayers that can sterilize classrooms. We have purchased thirty and as you see later on tonight, an additional three hundred and fifty filtration, air filtration systems that include a combination of HEPA filters and UVC light, antimicrobial. We, I think are doing a really good job cleaning our classrooms, maybe to a fault in that, you know, we're definitely experiencing papers curling because of the fogging that's going on. If there's a specific question about PPE, I'm happy to answer that. We've, you know, as we're developing or rolling out the academic support cohorts, you know, everybody gets a thermometer so they can take temperatures where appropriate. We're actually installing individual three-sided plexiglass shields for students so that as they work at their workstation, they have a three-sided plexiglass around them. And then the person who sits in the center of the room also has a three-sided plexiglass at their station as well. What else can I say? Are there specific questions you have or is that what you're looking for?
I just kind of wanted an overview. I don't know if other people have questions, but.
We are continuing to look into any and all opportunities to improve safety in our schools by improving cleanliness or adding up, adding barriers, for example. So we've bought a ton of different types of barriers to kind of show people to see where people's comfort level is. So for example, we have on order an additional amount of plexiglass rolling walls so that if in a testing classroom, we need to have a translator nearby, that that translator can actually sit behind a clear plexiglass wall and be able to safely provide translations. We have ordered and are currently installing, wherever there's an academic support cohort or a testing classroom that does not have a sink, we have hand washing stations that are on mobile carts. We actually were able to procure ones that you don't have to use a foot pedal, they actually have hot water. We added paper towel dispensers to those, so we've actually purchased these pop-up tape paper towel dispensers so that staff and students have access.
Chris, we lost you.
You probably lost her because she's on a, she's on the, the district network. Because we're here, we're here at the office. I'm on my phone.
That was pretty extent, that was a good overview, I think.
Are we looking at PPE that includes like the full gown? Kinds of things, is that what like Brent is mentioning and other people that, you know, are, is that something that we're looking at in terms of having to be fully, having our teachers and staff be, and, you know, be completely protected in some, in some classrooms?
In, in some classrooms, it could be that way. You know, really what you're, what the resolution does is not, is just sets a aspirational plan and then we then we put the specifics behind it.
Yeah.
Have we done some research related to full PPE? Absolutely.
Sorry Gary, I just got back in, I got kicked out, so I'm back in on my phone.
Yeah, so, we're looking at all, all of those options in addition to what seems to be effective that's being utilized in other areas. Not just in the, in education, but in other industry.
Yeah, okay.
And just to reiterate, this is a resolution just, and, and the details come after, yes?
Yeah, let me, if, I'd like to speak to this resolution as well. And, and I want to preface it by saying I'm really actually encouraged by all the public comment we received earlier and from Brent was recently. What I'm hearing is that we all want the same thing, that we want the academic success of our students. We want safety of our students and our staff and public and advancing public health. We're concerned with, all concerned with the mental health of not only our students, but also our staff. And we're also concerned about educational equity. And I would say that we, I, I think the entire board agrees that we want to do this in a way of shared governance and I think this is a part of shared governance. The, this resolution, as Gary pointed out, is largely a planning one. There's two, two of the three items on the resolutions is asking for plans. One, the, the third, ask for plans and action. And that's particularly for two identifiable student groups that appear to, to be most impacted negatively by the distance learning. And Cliff, you know, for the last two board meetings that, including the special study session, shared with us the, the data from the first two grading periods and it's stark with two student groups and, and we can't, we can't sit on that, we have to move on that. But the other two items with a curricular, extracurricular and co-curricular activities, we're hearing from a lot of folks that our students are, are, are need some kind of outlet there and we, and we know as academics that that's a part of academic success is connection with our, with our peers and with our teachers. But we're asking for a plan. We have ideas, but we need to think through how this could happen safely in ways that don't put any staff or student in jeopardy. And the same thing with the secondary school schedule. We're asking for a plan. Now, I, I do recognize and do appreciate the plan that has come out of the summer group and but I will say that tonight on Doug's comment, it was the first time that I heard it described as the best plan that we have. I had not heard that before. What I heard was, it was the plan that could, you know, roll out six periods at a time and I really appreciate the effort to do that. But the plan, you know, raised a lot of concerns about the amount of mixing, how vulnerable the plan might be to shutdowns and then, you know, reverting back to full distance learning, as well as labor and time to clean rooms in between classes and those kinds of things. So, what the board is asking for on that third resolution is the best plan that could give us the opportunity to go to hybrid when public health conditions allow us to. Right now, we're not even allowed to. But if it were possible, what would be the best plan in a hybrid mode? If this is the best plan, I want to hear that and I want to see the evidence compared to other plans. But I've actually heard mixed messages about whether or not the sixth, sixth period hybrid model is the best plan.
And, you know, piggybacking on that, the, this, this resolution does not say that we're throwing out all the work of, of the Distance Learning Committee and the valuable and wonderful work they did over the summer. We're not, we want it to go back to that committee to develop, as, as Sheldon said, the best plan. The idea of the extracurricular and co-curricular programming, we want the sites to develop plans. So, we're not coming from a top-down saying this is what you have to do. We're saying this, these are the discussions that need to happen.
And I, I fully agree that with one of the, one of the commenters, a special ed teacher was saying, you know, teachers know best how this is going to work. And that's why I'm leaning on the committee to make that, to make that decision, to, to tell us. We look, you know, here is what this model would look like, what that model would look like, and this is the one that we think would work the best.
Yes, we definitely, um. We're not trying to dictate. What we're trying to do is saying, to recognize the need for these three issues to, to be developed and because, you know, our students are struggling. And, and through this resolution, we're hoping to have discussion and come up with plans to help in those struggles while keeping students and staff safe. That's why I asked Chris to kind of list some of the stuff that we've been doing so far.
There is a, I want to point out that there is somewhat of an urgency to this however, because of what one of the commenters said is, we don't, we don't have a whole lot of time before the second semester starts. And whatever schedule we start on will constrain our opportunities later on in the semester. So that's why we want to look at it now.
So that everybody knows when they go on Christmas break, what's going to happen when they come back. Because nobody wants to be on pins and needles during those two weeks worrying. They need to know. Although I would like to see the curricular and co-curricular happen soon. And I would like to see the special ed cohorts happen soon. I don't want to have to wait until January. Comments? Other people? Other board members?
So you have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do. So if there's no more comments or questions, then we need to vote.
I've got a comment if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Who put this together?
Sheldon.
Are you talking, are you talking? Oh, sorry.
And Gary.
That's good. Thank you.
So I just, I just wanted to comment, you know, after the, the study session and the learning continuity plan meetings and others, you know, where, where we're moving forward, we reconvene today with the Distance Learning Secondary Scheduling Group to look at our distance learning slash hybrid options for next semester. With the parameters, one of the parameters being six classes is too much, too much cohort mixing, so we were looking at three or less. So I guess my question is, is that a parameter from the board or are we open to keeping the six-period schedule? Because I'm, I just want to make sure I'm guiding the group in the right direction and is everything on the table? Are we looking at fewer cohorts, less mixing? I just want to make sure because we've got a limited amount of time before we have to finalize this.
And one other thing before you, before you answer that, because I don't know what the, what the right schedule is, the, the, we, what we've shared, some information we have right now is that we can't clean in the current, in the current proposed model. Can't contact trace in that current model. And I'll just leave it at that. There may be another way to do it, but we, but that is not, those are the two areas, Chris would concur, that she's, she's shared related to, to the, the cleaning piece. The contact tracing piece, the number of students mixing is a, would be problematic in that. And that's what other districts are finding that have opened up.
So, to answer your question there Cliff, you know, what, well, I'll speak for myself because I, I think maybe there's maybe a difference opinion on the board here. But I'm looking for a model that gives us the opportunity to go, to be in hybrid when public health allows. And what I've heard about the six-period model is it's not viable from a labor and time perspective and from a vulnerability perspective of being shut down from a, from an outbreak because of the high amount of mixing. If I'm wrong, I want to be told that and, and be shown that this is the most viable model, you know, in terms of academic continuity and public health. But that's not what I had understood.
I also, we've talked a lot about seeing what other districts are doing as they're allowed to move into the hybrid model. And so, I think that, what those districts have already experienced and what works for them, I think is, is pretty important in directing that conversation about which model would work best. And I agree with Sheldon, if six periods is going to work and there's evidence that, that we can clean, that we won't experience whiplash by having to close an entire school, then have at it.
Is it possible to, you know, for them to look at, I mean, I'm, I, I'm not against a six-period schedule necessarily if, if like Sheldon asked, you can prove that it's the best. The, the, the one that's been decided on just from, just strictly for me, doesn't work. I, the teacher is so vulnerable from all of those cohorts coming in from god knows where. You know, you have your first period block and then you have fifteen minutes to clean. Second period block, totally different group of kids, from totally different classes, having intermingled. All of that really gives me pause for that particular schedule. But it's eighty minutes, which is inside, in a classroom for eighty minutes, which everything I've read recently is exactly what you don't want to do. So is, if, if you had six periods, if you changed the way that, that it was scheduled so that you had hour classes and then you had longer periods of time in between, you know, just be a little more creative with that particular six period. I don't know whether it'd work or not, it's up to them. But for me personally, just this six period, the way that this six period is set up is untenable for me. But, because I think it really puts a teacher at tremendous risk. But, I don't know, it might work in another way.
I mean, there's, there's things that we can do to mitigate and, and clean in-between cohorts and figure out how much time we need. I mean, that's, that's something we could figure out. The, the issue with the six has been, even though students are in cohorts of a third and basically a third of the school, the teachers are with, with eighteen different cohorts, so six periods times three. So if, if, you know, there were to be a positive case, everyone that teachers come into contact with would need to quarantine. So, that's the issue. It's the largest amount of cohorts possible. The, the cleaning, we, we've got ideas and we can figure that out. So, and we could, you know, we, we can figure out bell schedules and how long it needs to be and all those things. So, I'm not asking necessarily for a certain number, just if, if six is too much and too much mixing, then we could shoot for, for fewer. That's just kind of the guidance I was looking for.
So. Yeah, I don't think six is necessarily off the table, but what I'm hearing is that what the five of us have come to understand and hear is that it is not looking like the best situation. That being said, we haven't been, I, I haven't, I'll switch to first person on this one. I haven't been a part of what the committee's been doing and the committee has been working incredibly hard. So I'm not trying to discount anything, but we are learning new things every single day. Like Brett pointed out, we are getting new OSHA restrictions and workplace protections and CDPH. Like, everything is getting updated constantly. So I mean, unfortunately, no matter how much we've worked on it leading up until now, that doesn't mean that it is the right thing if everything changes tomorrow.
I think one of the things that we, you know, we, this is all, we are flying a plane while, while we're building it. And so, the committee did a And so the committee did a great job putting something together. The challenge is what we've learned is putting together an instructional platform that folks thinks is going to be the best instructional platform. There's two piece, there's another equally as important piece that has to be factored in. Then you have to take that platform and say, now can we operationally do this? And so the operations piece, because we're changing the entire operations of the organization when you do this. So operations coming to staffing, operations coming to cleaning, operations coming to all of the pieces related to contact tracing. And so all that we've said up till now is instructionally, a solid plan, operationally, we don't know how we can deliver that. And so what I would say to the group is the committee should continue to go down that path of what that looks like, but they're going to have to bring in Chris and other people operationally, once they get some semblance of an, of a concept. So that we can look at it from an operational standpoint and see if it's doable. Cause it has to be able to, we have to be able to have the people power to be able to, to support that.
I think we also acknowledge what, what we knew in the summertime. Just as Caitlin said, things change daily. And so what might've seemed viable and workable in July may not be that way in November. So I, I, I just think it's really important that that committee looks, is, is open to look at different possibilities other than the six period day.
Is that clear enough?
Your question, does it Cliff?
There's mud.
Clear.
If I could put it in a sentence, it, it would be when the county goes to red or better. What gives us the best opportunity to go to hybrid if, if we want to then?
And not have, and not have whiplash where we have to close down because somebody in one cohort got sick and that teacher just, I don't want, I don't want whiplash. I want to know that when we start, we've got the best model possible to keep everybody safe and healthy. Does that answer your question, Cliff?
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, we can, we can work with that.
I guess I, I would ask, I would add one more thing for the committee. I'd like to, to know what the best, when you say best model is, are we talking? Does that include health and safety? Is that pedagogically? Because we
Yes.
We're in this.
Yeah.
And social emotional. So good luck.
I wrote it down, Gary. It's academic success, it's public safety, or public health, educational equity and mental health.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, there's.
Easy stuff. Yeah, I'm sorry. No.
Maddie, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I was just saying that the timeline is, I mean, we don't, we're not operating in a timeframe. Even if we go to red, there's no, there's, there's no, I don't think anything from us, any edit from us saying that we're going to automatically go to hybrid. I mean, I think we're all thinking of this as very staggered and getting, getting those students that really need, that are super at risk right now. That, that help in both academic and social emotional and, and working on those other things. When we get to red, we can do a lot of these social emotional wonderful lists that, you know, with the community groups to implement extracurricular and co-curricular things. Once we get into red, that's easier to do. Going back to a whole hybrid where everybody's back in a hybrid model is, is huge. And you know, it, it may be, we don't know where the pandemic's taking us. It's certainly not good now.
Right. And as, but as, as Sheldon had mentioned earlier, if whatever schedule we look at, if it's not the sixth period, that means our distance learning schedule might be different. So they can be, so we wouldn't know before.
It would be, yeah.
Sorry. So we do have a little bit of a time.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's definitely what I meant was implementing it.
Right, right, right. Got it.
Not creating it.
You're, you're talking about implementing a full on rollback of hybrid. Yeah.
There is mud.
Yep.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, are we ready to vote or are there more comments, questions, ideas? Yep. Okay. All in favor of approval of resolution 2021-10? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, resolution passes. All right, now we are on to business services. Approval of resolution 2021-11 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, State of California for Emergency Waiver Public Project.
I'm going to approve so that we can discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, do you want to fill us in a little bit?
Yep. So, you know, we heard from, we heard from the County Office of Education last week that the Great and Ranteria Tribe was offering grants of a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars of reimbursement for air purifiers for classrooms or for school use, in particular inside of classrooms. And so what we did is we, we worked with SCO because you, we, you know, 397,000 or that amount of money would put us well over the public bid threshold for purchasing or purchase acquisition. So there is a resolution we can do under public contract code that allows the board to declare an emergency in order for us to bypass that process. The challenge is number one, we want to get these air purifiers in ASAP. But number two, we actually have to take delivery by November 27th, 26th, 27th. So it really didn't allow us for much time to be able to go out and hold a full blown public bidding process, which usually takes about eight to 10 weeks. And so this resolution is for, before the board to basically pass it, allowing us to go ahead and make the next item on the agenda, which is purchase of 350 of the Aerolite 2000 air purifiers.
Well, Chris, did you say, oh, so go ahead.
Oh, I just think it's very straightforward and logical and absolutely a hundred percent an emergency. And it's also, so I want to give a shout out to the Great and Ranteria liberated Indians for providing this.
This is a great deal.
They didn't just offer it to us, they offered it to districts in Sonoma County.
No, I know, I know, but I still want to say thank you.
And I, you know, we're super grateful for their generosity and we want to take advantage of it as much as we can.
Yeah, I think it was really foolish to not take advantage. I mean.
Is it, Chris, just for clarity, that's a thousand bucks per unit?
Yes, the reimburse up to a thousand. Up to 150.
Yeah, I was going a thousand dollars, that's it.
No, a thousand dollars per unit.
The deal, and we were already moving towards buying more air filters anyway, right?
Yeah. And this is really like having a HEPA air filter slash UVC. So these systems, they literally pull, that you, you set them on the ground and the idea is they pull the air content. They pull the contaminants in the air down away from breathing level, right? So at the level at which we're breathing, these units sit on the floor, they pull the contaminants down to the unit. They suck it in, they put it through a HEPA air filter, which, you know, which filters about 99.9% of the impurities. And then it goes through a UVC light, which is antimicrobial property. So it kills viruses, et cetera. So, and then it's constantly doing this as long as it's on. It's basically pulling in air contamination and pushing clean out, out the other side. So yes.
Smoke, we can't not do this, especially if we're about to get reimbursed a thousand per, that's.
Well, and I think longer term, these types of greater air filtration systems will assist us during bad smoke days. We had, I think it was 28 spare the air days between August and September. I mean, you know, so this is also, I think longer term, it's a great opportunity for us to have these types of HEPA air filters in, in our classrooms, making sure our air, I mean, our filtration systems, our HVAC is working properly. We have upgraded to MRF 13. This is an additional layer on top of that, that really is in the classroom filtering the air at an even higher level.
Excellent.
Sounds great.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. And then, since we passed that, now we have a purchase approval for Apache Industrial Services Inc. for the purchase of 350 portable air filtration units for Petaluma City Schools.
I'm going to adopt the purchase approval.
A second.
I think we already totally discussed it, didn't we? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I love voting to spend money that's not really our money.
Okay. And, and we're super grateful that this company is working with us to get these built and shipped to us so we can take receipt by the 26th. So.
Such a fast turnaround.
Good job, Chris. That's.
Thank you. Okay, discussion information only. 12.1.1 Public Self Insures and, excuse me, Annual Report for the Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group.
So fortunately, these items seem very mundane compared to the bigger topics that are on this agenda. So this is literally just an annual report for RUSIG, which we're a member of. It's very perfunctory and it's for information only.
Any questions or comments? Okay. 12.1.2 Petaluma City Elementary School District Parcel Tax Annual Report 2018-19.
So the next two items are just that for information. These are the annual reports completed by the parcel tax oversight committees. And we, we wanted to get them up here on, you know, for public review. And so if there's any questions, they're a standard format that we've used in the past. When I first got to Petaluma, they didn't have written reports, they gave verbal reports. This way we really can highlight it in writing. And so the oversight committee again has given their blessing for both of these reports.
Yeah. Okay, so we kind of talked about the elementary, Petaluma Joint Union High School District Parcel Tax Annual. I'm sure it's the same, you would be saying the same thing about this, Chris?
Absolutely. And I'd also just like to say shout out to the community for their generosity. Because I think, you know, our, our esteemed librarian early in the, earlier in the agenda talked about the importance of the library program. And both of these parcel taxes support our library programs, which are obviously very critical to student learning and student success in our district. So just grateful to the community for their ongoing support for both.
It, does it support the music programs too?
Yes, it supports a variety of, of items. Whether it's class size reduction or reducing class size and, and certainly music, performing arts or fine arts. So yeah, there's a whole bunch. If you, you see the attachments, it's kind of got a breakdown of the program and the dollar amounts associated with each.
Perfect.
And we'll be posting these all online as well, so that you can actually see these reports online. And, you know, we, we just add to them. So all of the historical reports that we have are online as well.
We just make sure a lot of this goes out on social, because I know that's how a lot of parents and community members get the info.
Definitely.
All right, social media marketers speak.
Thank you, Caitlin. Okay, now the biggie. Student Services, amended board policy, first reading for board policy 5145.7 Sexual Harassment. And we have a comment from the public. Sarah? Are you still there?
I believe we had two comments.
Yeah, but Sarah Atropolis gave her comment earlier. I believe. She talked about that during her public comment time. And so Sarah side chick.
But we can open it up to them again and then.
They want to. But I had promised Sarah that I would call on her and that's what I'm doing.
Thank you very much, Ellen. And thank you all for going through this over and over again. So it's, I appreciate it. It's really important. There's a couple of things that came up during the presentation from the principals that I'd like to address. And one of them is that sexual harassment and the language of it and the confirmation, the teaching of it and the discussion of it needs to be more than just a green pamphlet. It needs to be something that is embedded into the education from the get. And it's not something that you start with, with kindergartners, with the discussion of sexual harassment. So you know, sorry, that was Spanish. So instead you start with how do we interact with one another and how do we respect and honor one another? And that comes from a comprehensive K-12 HI curriculum, which we have and, but we don't have a curriculum. And I understand that this coming year, we're going to be looking into HI curriculum. However, I know that we were supposed to be doing social studies this year and everything's just kind of been put on hold for COVID for obvious reasons. It's really important to see how we learn how to interact with one another and respect one another from the beginning. And so once we learn how to do that and, and honor each other's diversity and teach that from the beginning throughout, then it doesn't be, then it's always, then it's just within the fiber of all the education that we're doing. And it's not just a pamphlet, because my child Tabitha took that pamphlet, looked at it and tossed it. Like there was nothing really that they got from it. And then also, one of the questions that I have, I, I think that this discussion, and everyone has said this way, echo it again, really needs to have students at the center of it, at the formation of it, at discussing how they want to be a part of interacting with it. So having them on whatever committee is discussing it is really, really vital. As it is with all the other committees in regards to sexual harassment and you know, the equity issues that you guys have been working on in the last couple of weeks and always. Thirdly, the question that I have is in regards to what is the policy with regards to anyone who has been accused of harassment? So where is the role of restorative justice and how are we dealing with those students rather than things like, you know, suspensions and this, that and the other? Like, how are we bringing them back into the community? How are we working with the staff and students? It sounded like somebody retired when they had an issue with it. I wonder if someone should be retiring or if there should be some kind of work with that person that then is brought back into the community? And how do we work with that restoratively? So I appreciate your time and I believe that is all I had to say. And I know Sal was running through her three minutes earlier. So, or there three minutes earlier. So I would love to hear what Sal has to say again.
I have a quick question. When you talked about Title IX Coordinator, is there a Title IX Coordinator at every school? Or is it a position held by like Liz and?
So we, we, we have two Title IX coordinators because I do all the student services ones. And so what you're seeing on the board agenda tonight is only related to students. So when Sal mentioned earlier, the, what we do with staff, that's a whole separate Title IX. And that, that one is in a different section. And that's Matthew Harris is also a Title IX coordinator and he deals with all the staff end of it.
Well, we then, in this policy state, I mean, we don't have to say name, we can say position.
We do, we do that in the, we do that on the ARs. The ARs are the specifics about how you implement it. This is just the boilerplate legal language from CSBA. So this is the stuff that's been vetted through legal that meets the requirements. It's the AR where we put the meat behind it. So what does that look like, you know, in our district?
Okay. So then a lot of the questions I had.
Yeah, it's AR stuff. And even like some of the things that, that Sarah brought up, those are, those are, those are, those are all touched on in the air.
And does that come to us as well?
Yeah, it, well, it comes, it comes at a later date.
Okay.
You have to have the policy first.
Okay. And the reason we're updating the policy is because a lot of the law changed. And so it was a requirement that all, all districts update their policy and get it.
So this is just the broad overview and the AR.
Yes.
This is just the broad overview for students. It's in the 5,000, so there's a separate. This is just the broad overview for students. It's in the five thousand. There's a separate broad overview for human resources.
And are we going to see that as well? Has that been updated?
We'll see that one next. We'll do the broad overviews first and then we'll come back with the ARs later.
Okay.
And do we want to let Sal back on to share their?
She wants to add more to what she said. She's welcome.
Um, yeah, hi, I am. Yeah, probably. It sounds like a lot of this is addressed kind of with regard to personnel in a separate area. So yeah, I think the the main point I was wanted to get across was just kind of just kind of again, highlighting student input that we've heard recently and the big issue being kind of having a trusted anonymous reporting sort of system that students have faith in. And just that there's value in like including that in the language. I understand this is a broad kind of high level policy. So maybe not getting into every detail is is, you know, the thing that that is, that's the goal. And then I don't know if there's any also value in just, yeah, highlighting the the importance of student input being part of the process and have having that articulated in the policy in some way.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can definitely look into it for the AR language that we.
I'm taking notes on things you want to see there. Restorative justice, trust trusted anonymous reporting, student input.
Yeah. Those are the three big things.
I I think the one thing is just to keep in mind, this is this is Title Nine and it's a federal law. And part of the law changing is there isn't anonymity with Title Nine. In fact, the complainant and the respondent both have the rights to see everything that comes forward and and every piece of evidence in the situation and everything a complainant puts forward. We have to turn over to a respondent in order to review all the evidence and all of the claims so that the respondent can respond to the accusation. And so and you know, while during uniform complaint, there's more anonymity during Title Nine, the the laws have changed and you know, so that that's just something as as we're moving forward, you know, I know you're taking notes on that, but you we're we won't see that language in the AR because that's not the the current law.
Well, using something like the Stop It app, which is anonymous.
Oh, yeah.
You could.
We have that, but this is Title Nine specific, you know.
Yeah, Title Nine is.
When this when.
Been violated. So after they've done a sexual.
Right.
Lane and nothing's been done. That's when they would file a Title Nine complaint.
Got it.
Right.
Yeah. So we can start off as anonymous and then goes beyond then it. Okay.
Exactly. And and what we're looking at this policy and this AR is when it goes beyond, when it comes to the Title Nine Coordinator, the the protocols, procedures and law.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Any other comments about this? It will, this is only the reading. It will be coming back to us. Joanna?
I having a hard time just because everything we've talked about actually over the past year or so, but more specifically the last couple of meetings and then the presentation we just heard, I mean, it says that that we're committed to maintaining the safe school environment free from harassment. The district struggling for the students who feel they are being or have been sexually harassed on and on. But I don't really know if we're doing enough. I mean, I know we have this policy, but it's just words on a paper if we're not actually implementing.
And that's what you have to put in here. That's what you're that's what you're going to be looking for, Joanna, when we look at the AR. Is you're you're taking you're taking these these overarching principles and then you're seeing, well, and how are they ensuring that? So it's it's the the ARs will get down to the specifics related to, you know, like if if it's a graduation board policy and it says the board, the board believes it's important that all students graduate. The AR says now exactly what's the district going to do to ensure that there's multiple safety nets for students. So it's the specifics. It lays that out. And so you're you're going to want to see that in the AR. And that makes sense because I think everybody's in agreement that that providing back general information is not enough. That's not, that's just a beginning. It's a first step in the process of providing providing awareness, training and life skills for students.
And art. Setting. It's very upsetting. I I just have to say I'm very just upset and bothered by all this. It's frustrating. And I know that we're having a second reading of this next month. And then will we look at the ARs maybe for the J meeting?
But I think that part of that is going to be that if you're looking at trying to write a good AR, you have to talk to students.
Yes.
Because then you identify. So there's you. You want to make sure that you 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 go through a really thoughtful process. So that when, you know, ARs typically, there's a you can read an AR in any school district and you can you can, there's a history behind, oh, that must have happened here. They have a response for a particular situation. So we want to just make sure that we have logical actions, adult actions for the the overarching goals.
So will students be involved in developing the AR?
Well, they are in the way of they are in the way of when you when you're having, when you're discussing with students. Because one of the issues related to this is why aren't why aren't more students reporting? So are they going to have, are they going to be a part of helping us develop the ARs? Yes. Through their through a discourse and a discussion about maybe there's some ways that we can specifically some some gaps we can close because that's really what we're trying to do. And that in that one area is close the gap and make people feel comfortable that that they can report in that something's going to take place. And, you know, we start talking about restorative, we'll have to lay out specifically what that looks like.
Right.
Like that.
So then that would be a question back to what Joanna was saying and also what Sarah and Sal were saying. The AR would then if we wanted to create an HI curriculum that, you know, used to exist, doesn't exist. And, you know, that that really is substantive from kindergarten through twelfth. Would that go in the AR? Is that where we would look for that? Does that have to be created before we?
No, you don't. You don't list.
You know, and the other thing of, yeah.
You don't list specific specific curriculum in an AR. You list the components of what you were looking for.
What you want to see.
Yeah, you look for the complaint.
We could have in the.
What is that?
This curriculum, you want something K twelve.
Right.
AR, but not the specifics.
Right. So we're going to enlist support from from our consultant to do some of the student work. We know that right now we're we are knee deep, particularly Liz with Student Services on COVID testing. We've got to get our code our COVID testing protocols in place with our vendors and we're we've identified some of that, but that's going to take some time to be able to put that, put that piece in place. But once we gather that data from 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 our consultant, then we'll be able to 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 finish wrapping up a an AR and we can bring that back.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we're moving on to future business. We've got the Stop It presentation on December eighth, a facilities update on January twelfth, an ethnic studies, I guess, presentation on January twenty six. And could we add something about project sixteen nineteen in that ethnic studies presentation? Project sixteen nineteen is project based on about slavery.
What's?
You know what I'm talking about, Cliff?
I've heard of it. Yeah, what's what's? So what's what's the ask? What's the request?
Well, I was just wondering if when we're talking about ethnic studies.
Hey, we're still down.
What?
So don't ignore Chris.
Okay. I just thought that would be a good place to talk about project, that project within the ethnic studies. Maybe not, but.
Well, what would you like to know about it? It's not part of any state adopted curriculum at this.
I know. What I guess I'm wondering is how could we, how would we learn about that and maybe somehow implement it within the curriculum?
In the ethnic studies curriculum, sorry.
Well, I don't know if it would be in the ethnic studies or where it would be. I just would kind of like to.
Do we have it? Do we know? Are we? Do we have any teachers that are utilizing it? Why don't we start by finding out to see if we have anyone that that is that could that could speak to it? We'll start that way. Because I because I I'm not familiar with it. I mean, I've I've heard of it, but I don't I haven't seen it specifically. I don't know. I I certainly could speak to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I've received emails from parents concerned and asking if we are teaching it. And, you know, I responded to my knowledge. No, it's not part of any adopted curriculum, but granted, teachers.
Project based and it definitely fits in with Common Core from everything I've read about it. But, yeah, I would just, I don't know. Something I'm curious about.
So we'll find out, see if we have anybody that that could 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 share how they utilize it.
That would be great. Thank you. Any other future business?
And so after our meeting last week, the study session, and we saw the the failing rates in particular for certain populations in the EL, the English language learners and special ed. And especially in ninth grade, it just really, really struck me. And it it happened, it just so happened that the next day I was talking with Hallie Cloud from the Pedaluma Healthcare District and
Really?
And we weren't just talking about puppies. And and she was talking about a loose group of of organizations that are trying to come together and kind of address, you know, kids that are falling through, you know, and just not being successful. And then it just so happened that I also that same day talked to Megan Kelly and Elise Temple at Pedaluma People's Services. And they're part of this kind of loose organization. And Megan is kind of the unofficial coordinator, I guess. And it and it just seemed like it felt like we have, you know, we have the district really working on this, trying to figure out these cohorts, what they might look like, how we might be able to bring back teachers, if, you know, all of that part of our district. And then we have these really vital, wonderful organizations tied, working for kind of similar purposes, but there's no, they're they're just, it always seems like there's not a good way of them talking to each other. So I was thinking that maybe we could, I'm just proposing, an emergency summit where we talk like soon and and talk to these, bring these groups together with our district and kind of address the the academic and social emotional crisis. And just have a conversation about how they could work together, how they could, what the district is doing, can these organizations help?
Right.
You know, it doesn't necessarily mean that they will, but that they're talking to each other. It doesn't necessarily mean that it would be a standing committee where Liz has to show up twice a month or anything like that. It it's just like, let's start a conversation together and talk about what they're thinking, what we're thinking, can they work together? Brainstorm immediate steps to help support them and.
I think one of the things, Maddie, that we're we're shooting for is is before we have that meeting with with stakeholders, our community stakeholders, that we're able to come back, come to them with a plan. Because the challenge is for us is that we're going to have to deliver that day in, day out.
Yeah.
And and our community members can can serve as a resource. And they probably can come up with creative ways to support us, but they're not going to be able to deliver day in, day out.
No, I agree.
To be, we have to have something that we, if if they say, you know, we really can't support this. I mean, we want to, but we can't support it with a lot of resources. We still have to be able to deploy it.
Right.
So I think if we have a plan that we can come to, then yeah, that's I think that's a great idea. Then they can say, here's how we think we can support this.
Yeah. So I guess my my thinking in it is the urgency of it. You know, and that and that and that they there, there's some mechanism so that so that everyone knows what everybody's doing kind of because I know that I know PPSC, I mean, what happened when I saw Megan and Elise was that they had they had listened to the whole meeting. And when we were when when Cliff presented that data, they were, they just looked at each other and went, we have to do something. And I know that that happens, you know, in the community itself. So you know, it's it's something that I know that they're going to start working on and they're working. And so I understand the necessity of having a plan. But maybe that, I guess what I'm asking is that plan come together kind of quickly.
Yeah, Jason is Jason is working specifically on that particular area. Liz is working specifically, a yell. Liz is working with special ed. Cliff is working on the schedule. So those are the so Jason, as it relates to ELs would be is is the point point of contact. And so we'll we've already had an initial discussion about about because you 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 shared. You you give a lot more information now, but you you shared the general idea in that with 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 me a couple of days ago. And I I spoke with Jason about that.
Okay, good.
I love it. I think it's great.
Yeah.
I mean, we have valuable community resources and this is a time when we really need to work with them.
Yeah. And I was thinking, you know, the the teachers of those specific populations, the parents of the, you know, just having everybody. Not a lot of people. I'm not envisioning a lot of people because then it just gets unwieldy. But those real, those people that really are directly related.
I would love to be part of that.
If you could send any of the names of those folks to to myself and Jason, it'd be awesome.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it doesn't need to be an agenda item necessarily, but I think we need to examine our public comment and public comment processes because I mean, Brent is right that comments should be able to happen for every single item as annoying as that kind of seems in the Zoom world. That's kind of how it works. And, you know, part of it, as we know from in person, is that someone might last minute fill out one of those yellow sheets because someone said something that now they want to have a comment on.
I think I think what needs to happen, like what I did tonight, was I asked. I asked the people that wanted to comment, do you want to comment now or when it comes up? And then I wrote.
But people in the beginning might not know that they want to comment on something that happens. But if I say something stupid and someone wants to comment after trustee Quinn says something stupid, which she does sometimes.
No.
Or when I swear, heaven forbid. So I don't know, it might be just good to look at what other districts are doing and how they're doing it, but also.
Reopen the chat.
Yeah, open the chat on every agenda item.
Maybe reopening the chat before we get into the action, action and discussion items. Because that's where the comments usually are.
Yeah, let me look to see what others are doing. I think most I and I think that most are either doing it the way we are or and or right before they're there. They give them one, two opportunities.
Yeah, I think we should.
Because it's going to be if 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 it's every item, it's gonna, you're gonna dramatically increase the length of time, but you could do that. I mean.
I mean, yes, we are, but that's what a public forum is like.
Well, my suggestion is opening it up for comments not on the agenda and then reopening it before we get to action items. And then maybe opening it one more time before we get to discussion items.
I mean, that's, I mean, you just literally have to have room for on every item for comment. It's not.
No, but I don't think we can open the chat just before every, I think we could open it before action items because there's, you know, a few there and then we could open it again.
What if we went because you're you're, what if we? What if we went, because you're, what if we, you typically, you get your public comments before, before, at the beginning of the agendized item.
Right, before the agenda item, yes, that's what I'm saying.
It doesn't, it doesn't take place. So what could happen is, is you could, when we get to action items, we could go over and do a quick review of what's on the action items for tonight.
Yeah.
And do a review of that, and then find out at that point, so that we can plan it. Because that's as much information as we'd be sharing anyways before.
Sometimes you want a public comment based on what someone else has said. Like, I know that's shitty, but that's how the process works. Like, I don't want to be here at 9:30 either, but, I mean, I do, like, I ran for office. Thank you all for voting for me. But, like.
So could we just open the chat while we have the action item? Is that what you're thinking?
Even just 30 seconds before each item, you know, if people aren't paying attention, that's on them. You know, but if you, if you're specifically here to comment on 11.1.1, you should be able to comment on it when we get to 11.1.1.
Which is what I tried to do.
No, I know. I'm not saying, yeah, like, just for consistency's sake, and so we don't get sued's sake.
So we can put it before each action item and give people an opportunity to speak prior to, to the board making a motion.
I think we also need one before, yeah, the consent agenda and before discussion.
Definitely before discussion. I'm not sure about consent agenda.
Again, it's not like whether we want to or not.
I just don't think it's necessary before consent agenda. That's my, that's just my opinion.
That's not how the law works, but. Okay. I said what I need to say.
Okay. Anything else? Are we ready? Meeting adjourned.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, public, for coming to our meeting. We.